... stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Audience may be seated.
Good job.
Thank you for joining us. Item three is our community invocation. Is Pastor Brian here? Will be led tonight by Pastor Mark Bryan with Harvest Church. If you will all join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Pastor? I'm gonna make a special request. So you put, lift my mom up in prayer.
Yes, I would be happy to.
Thank you.
What is your name?
Sidney Bartlett.
Praying for Mom Sidney.
We lost my dad last week, so...
That's right. My condolences. I did hear that. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Father in heaven, we come to you now in the mighty and powerful name of Jesus Christ, and we ask you for grace and assistance for the issues of life. We thank you for your love, for your kindness, for your wonderful care and your concern about all the things that we can face in life. And Lord, we lift up Mayor Tammy's mother who is walking through a season of loss and grief, and we ask you to comfort her. We ask you to comfort, Lord, all those that might be in that situation across our city, our relationships and our families who may have lost a loved one, and we ask you to comfort the bereaved. We ask you tonight for our nation, for our state, for our cities. We ask for a peace to settle over hearts that are traumatized with violence and within civility and anger and the trouble that we see in our streets, and we thank you that much of it has not touched our streets, and we thank you for that. But we do pray for our first responders, for our police and fire and medical and all those that try to hold the line in the area of grief and trauma and loss of life and try to relieve the oppressed. And Lord, there's so much suffering in the earth today. We ask you for help. We ask you for wisdom. We thank you that there is a wisdom that is from above, is peaceable and gentle and willing to converse and yield on points of stubbornness in order that wisdom could be exalted. We pray for truth to be exalted. We pray for lies to be exposed. We pray for integrity to return to the halls of power of America. And we ask you for help in our families, in our homes, in our schools. We ask you for help. We are a nation that needs you now. Blessed this evening in the deliberations of this city council, be with the mayor as she works through the loss that she has mentioned here tonight, and thank you that we can look to you. Give wisdom where wisdom is needed. Give patience where patience is needed and deference where it is needed, courage where it is needed. And may we be better because we have trusted, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me that special request. Item four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
It does not appear that there are any changes to the agenda as published, so I would move that we adopt the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Item five, Mr. Clerk.
Nothing. Madam Mayor, in reviewing the, those that signed up for the public forum, appears that all of them relate to an item that is later on tonight's council agenda, which is item nine G. So there are none that are outside of wanting to address the council for nine G.
Thank you. Item six is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Do we approve the consent agenda as published? And for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylan?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move to our community presentation for an update from the children's museum.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I appreciate you having me back.
It was my super stealthy title for that.
Thanks, Josh. So I'm J.C. Jones, for those of you who don't know me. I don't know that we've interacted a lot, Councilman Burnt, so it's nice to see you. And Mayor Tammy, I'm very sorry for your loss. Sincerely, very sorry. I've been in front of this group a couple of times in the last several years to talk about different iterations of this project, so I thought it was appropriate to come again and give you an update of where we are at currently and then let you know some interesting developments we have going on. So the vision of the Children's Museum of Idaho is to inspire and nurture future explorers, innovators, and creative thinkers through interactive play in a safe, engaging environment with hands-on exhibits designed specifically for children ages two to eight years old. Our primary objectives are to create a dynamic, hands-on, engaging experience, an unstructured educational experience where children ages two to eight, along with the adults in their lives, learn through purposeful play. It's a place for children to encounter unique opportunities for discovery, creativity, and imagination, an enriching atmosphere that is accessible to children and their families regardless of their disability or income, an opportunity for teens and seniors in the community to volunteer, an atmosphere that fosters positive intergenerational relationships by encouraging adult-child interaction, an indoor and outdoor exhibit area designed to connect children with their natural environment, and an unplugged zone where phones and electronic devices are discouraged. So history of the project, for those of you who don't know or might not remember, this original idea came from the Boise Rotary. A woman named Susan Mahoney, who knows the mayor, reached out and sort of asked the question, why don't we have a children's museum in Meridian? Why don't we have one in Idaho? With our demographic of young families, it seems like a really easy fit. And at the time, this is in 2015, it was around the same time that the Meridian Development Corporation had partnered with the city to create a survey to find out what citizens in Meridian really wanted to see for the downtown area. And out of 500 families surveyed, Children's Museum came up as the top request, the top need for young families, which aligned perfectly with Mrs. Mahoney's inquiry as to why don't we have one. And Meridian's goal is to be the premier place to live, work, and raise a family, and because of that, Meridian is the perfect home for the first children's museum in Idaho. So led by Mayor Tammy, city staff partnered with the Rotary and local groups and began facilitating a conversation in October of 2015. It's crazy when I think about, it'll be three years in October that we've been diligently working on this project and have seen many iterations as time has gone on and to be in the place that we are now. So from 2015 to 2018, we morphed. I was in front of this group once as Bubbles Museum, and I was in front of this group once as The Station, a children's museum, and now finally as Children's Museum of Idaho. Over those three years, we've had a variety of people that I would say were impactful to our project, who participated in our advisory committee or in our, our growing and changing board, who helped with planning and supporting our project, one of which was the Meridian Press, who's always been a great partner for us. Patty Bowen with the Meridian Press reached out to me in early 2018 and wanted to do an article on The Station. She wanted to know what we were doing and wanted to get the public updated, and that happened to be a completely wonderful kismet event because a woman named Pat Baker read that article, and Pat Baker is a champion of all things youth and all things community. She had been pursuing opening a children's museum as a business and seriously considering that for about the past 11 years. She read our article in the Meridian Press, happened to reach out to Hillary at the city, and we were able to connect our two organizations. So in March, The Station sat down with Pat and we talked about our goals. We talked about how we could be collaborative versus competitive and what we could do to get the museum facility here sooner rather than later. So in March of this year, our groups merged and we created the new nonprofit of the Children's Museum of Idaho, and we've been moving forward as a new board since that time. We were able to rent a facility, and this currently is the old Dupus Boomer's location or Tony Roma's location over on, on Progress next to Wincote, it's in the Central Park Plaza area, 790 South Progress Avenue. The facility does contain nearly 9,000 square feet of indoor space for exhibits and approximately 5,000 square feet of outdoor exhibit space, which is now fully fenced. It also includes almost an acre and a half of parking, which includes plenty of space for bus bays to get in, turn around, access the facility. And we, because of where we are, we have excellent visibility from the freeway. There's two signs on the freeway. It's easy on and off of that Meridian exit. So we are preparing to open up in this facility. Like I mentioned, we have outdoor exhibit space that will be seasonal and will change, develop, depending on programming and the weather. Our exhibits, this is just a mural created by Sector 17. They're gonna create three murals similar to this one. The current exhibits that we are putting in is, the theme is a journey through time, which is captured really beautifully in this mural. You'll notice the train in the front, and then they're going to be finishing that rocket there in the back. So this is one of the forefront pieces that you see when you walk into our train exhibit. We, like I mentioned earlier, are focusing on purposeful play and hands-on experiences. So each one of our exhibits will feature an educational guide that will be posted on the wall in the facility that will provide guide to the parents on how to really instruct their child in the learning through that exhibit. The goal really is that the parent, grandparent, adult sibling, or whatever that familial relationship is, that that adult become the teacher in the facility and help harbor that love of learning and that hands-on experience. So those educational guides will be posted in each facility, and we will also be sending children home with a guide as well, so they can continue the learning at home with their adults. So some examples of our exhibits are going to be a dinosaur dig, cave and mountains, which we start on our cave next week. It's very exciting. A pirate ship, which will feature a steer, load, cargo, flags, maps, and murals. A frontier, which will have wagons and supplies, a teepee canoe, and a log cabin, and you actually have an item on your agenda a little bit later on about that frontier exhibit. We are going to have a farm-to-fork exhibit and really teach children where their food comes from and the value of our agricultural history in this area. We will feature a city, which will have a bank and a grocery store, a cafe, a dentist, veterinary clinic, and a construction site. We'll have a maker's space, which will be a really wonderful, hands-on way for kids to get to kind of create their own learning experience. For some of our lower-income children, having the opportunity to play with manipulatives where the goal is just to create out of imaginary play without any goal of, you know, or worrying about breaking something, or maybe there's access to materials that they wouldn't regularly have access to. So it's truly about featuring imagination. We will have an outside imagination playground, which has soft blocks. So it's just, again, open-ended free play. A toddler town that will be fully fenced off to help our youngest visitors with sensory and tactile toys. A train exhibit, which this mural is in. An airport with a sit-in cockpit, a load luggage, maps, and weather station, and then a space exhibit with a sit-in space shuttle that has controls and satellite and planet Things that you need to know, right now our memberships are on sale. They're on sale on our website. We have day memberships as well as annual memberships, and then also punch cards, which are great, going, going to be great for maybe daycare facilities, things like that. We have some community events coming up. We will be participating in Meridian's trunk-or-treat, the Winter Lights Parade, and the Winterland Festival. So if you're attending any of those, those events, stop by NCS. We will be hosting two to three soft openings in October specifically for our members, donors, and invited guests with our grand opening and ribbon cutting at 1:00 p.m. on December 1st, which is amazing news. And it is one of those things that, when we think that'll be just over three years from when the very first focus group sat, and we sat and we met in City Hall with just this kind of being a dream. And so we're beyond thankful to be here three years later, getting ready to open right in our downtown core. We are on Facebook and Instagram. Those are our handles, so I would advocate everybody to get out and like us and follow us, so you can stay up to date as to what is happening. We have events all the time, and we post photos regularly as we gain sponsors. That information is posted and it's made live, so get out and see what we're doing. Get your families excited about it. Be excited about it. And stop by and look at our website. It will include the information that you'll want to know about memberships, possibly participating in field trips, our hours of operation, and then the ways that we are going to be focusing on low sensory hours for families who might be on the autism spectrum. And if you've heard me present, I always end with a gratitude slide, so I'm gonna do that tonight because that's just what I do. So I wanna say thank you to Meridian in general. Our community is fantastic. Anytime that we have asked for help or asked for support, we've never once been turned down. The community as a whole has come out to support us. Thank you to our current and past board members, which include Hillary Blackstone, Ashley Squires, Jeanette Sanchez, Lilly Giordano, and Woody Sobie. Our advisory board members, who have hung in there with us from 2015 until now, some of who are Chad and Andy with Earthstead Architects, Thrive and Financial, All American Insurance, Habitat for Humanity, the Rotary Club, the Optimist Club, the Kiwanis Club, Meridian Development Corporation, the Meridian Library District, the Meridian Downtown Business Association, the School District, Patricia Kemthorn, and so many others. Sector 17, for our gorgeous artwork, there'll be two other murals that will be, begin work in our facility, so you'll wanna come by. Pat, our executive director, virtually lives at the museum, so if you get curious and wanna see some of that artwork, stop by. Wright Brothers and Wright Construction for continuing to be our champion and partner. Schofield Design for the fabrication of our rocket, airplane, and spaceship. You guys are current and former city council. I wanna make sure to say thank you to Councilman Bird, who, I do this every time. There's a reason I don't do this very often, because I always get emotional, but Keith has always been a champion of Meridian's youth and of this project. Sorry. You'd think I'd get better. I don't. Okay. City staff, so we have Caleb Hood and Bill Parsons and the entire team with the Building Department. The speed at which things are being approved by city staff is off the charts. Our architect and the team that we're working with always says very positive things about their interaction with city staff and how kind the city staff has been. And then the countless sponsors, donors, and community partners that we have, they're all posted on our website. I was going to list them, but I feel like I've taken up a lot of your time anyways, so hop on the website and look at them. And then most of all, thank you to Pat Baker, who had a love for community and continues to have a love for community, and who is here. If you'd like to meet her, and she's happy to stand for questions, and I'm happy to stand for questions, get excited about this. It is exciting. It is going to be another destination for Meridian, but this is something that's truly going to put Meridian on the map and make us unique in the state of Idaho. It's going to be unique in this area of the country, and we really are grateful for all of the support that we've received from you and from the city. Thank you.
Thank you, J.C. And Pat, do you have anything you wanna add?
No, I don't. She did a beautiful job. I'm so glad.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavanagh.
Not a question, just a quick comment. Ms. Jones presented to the Meridian Kiwanis Club a few weeks ago, and the enthusiasm in the room for this project was infectious, and I think it just speaks to your involvement. When you get excited about something, people just need to get out of your way because it's gonna happen one way or another.
Thank you.
Your work on HPC, your work on this. J.C. and I've had a chance to talk, when this first was presented, I was somewhat skeptical, and I've been really happy to be proven wrong time and time again from you on this. My son gets his haircut over there, and so we do status updates each time that we go over there and get our haircut. So really looking forward to seeing the final product. Thank you for coming and giving us an update. Keep up the great work. This is really remarkable.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate that.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylan.
What a fantastic presentation, J.C. You killed my interest the entire time.
Thank you.
Which is saying a lot for me, because I ADD a little. You look fabulous.
Thank you.
That's not my question. Can you tell me a little bit about the rates for membership, or, and do you have a program? Because you're talking about maybe some lower-income individuals and what you have to offer for them.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a great question. So daily membership rates are $8, and that's for adults and children. It begins at two years of old, two years of age, because that's when our programming begins. So two years and up, you pay $8, and that's whether you're the mom and dad or whether you're the child. We do offer a pass for EBT cardholders, and those are those participating in the school nutritional assistance program for our low-income families, and that's $3 for the day rate. What's I think awesome about our day rate is it is for the day. So if you come in the morning and like most little kiddos need a nap and some lunch and a break, you can go home and get a hand stamp and then come back in the afternoon. So we would encourage you to take advantage of the whole day. It's one of those things to truly get the benefit out of the museum. You don't wanna spend just two or three minutes in an exhibit. You really wanna immerse yourself, and as the parent, use the guides and really nurture your child's learning experience. So that's available. And then an annual membership right now is $85, and that is for an adult and one child. And then you can add additional children or family members for $25. So $85 gets you all year. It begins on your first visit, so if you buy it today, that doesn't start today. If you are a grandparent and you wanna get it for your kiddo, you know, grandchildren, maybe for Christmas, and they don't visit until Christmas break, that's when that year begins, and they'll get the full 12 months out of that.
Thank you very much.
It's a good question. Thank you.
And you have sponsorships available?
We do have sponsorships available. I did. I brought my list. So we are still seeking sponsorships for a variety of exhibits. Currently, we need a sponsorship for our pirate ship. So what is happening with these is these are being ordered, they're being fabricated, and they're coming out of our operational costs. And then so the hope is then to get sponsorships essentially to reimburse us so that we can use our operational funds for operations. So the pirate ship, the cave, the airport, our space exhibit, farm-to-fork exhibit, we had an interesting development with our maker's space today, so that one might be taken. Our dinosaur dig, our imagination playground, our trains exhibit, and then the learning guides themselves, which I think we might have a partnership for as well. So that being said, we have all kinds of sponsorships. So if, how you want to sponsor is maybe you come in and donate your time, we wanna talk to you. If that's how you can give, we want you to be a part. So, you know, if $20,000 isn't in your budget, but maybe a $5 monthly charge is, we want to talk to you. So it is something that we want this to be for and by the community, and if you have a heart for youth and education and you wanna be involved, we can get you involved. So all of the information, how to reach out to us, is on our social media and on our website.
And just a special note, it's a big facility. It may not look like it from the curb, but it's big inside, and there's opportunities for parties?
There is, yes. We will be hosting birthday parties. As Mayor Tammy said, it is a large facility. You don't know from driving by, but it has a second floor that has office space, which is pretty wonderful. It has a wall of windows, so staff will be able to sit in their offices and see the entire facility. And as we've taken down walls, it's become a very open space. But yeah, there is a community room, which has an expansion wall, so you can rent the facility to do a birthday party. With our birthday party rates, you'll get a member of our staff to come in and help you and help you, you know, write the letter for the thank you notes and handout cake and help with some of the programming, things like that. And we are still talking about corporate parties as well. So as we make decisions and policies, we're sort of in the early phase of that, we'll be posting everything on the website. But yeah, birthday parties in 2019 just got a lot more fun in Meridian.
[laughing]
Okay. Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavanagh.
One, thanks for letting me know about the membership. I just signed up.
Thank you.
It's super easy for all of you. I know we try and pay attention, but I knew that I'd forget about it. We've got a long meeting ahead of us, so thank you.
Appreciate that.
For that plug. And two, I just think it's great to see the utilization of that space. As some of you know, I was a bartender at Tony Roma's some 10 years ago when that place opened up, and it's nice to see something really exciting happening in that space that sat vacant for far too long. So a great find and a great utilization of the space.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, J.C., and thank you, Pat. You are an amazing woman.
Thank you.
And so are you.
Thank you.
And so is your daughter.
Thank you.
I haven't seen Charlotte forever.
She's growing too fast. So, thank you all.
Good to meet you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item nine, A, under action items. We have a professional services agreement.
That's awesome. Hi, Josh.
How are we doing tonight?
Good.
Good.
I don't recognize you without...
I know. That's frightening. I don't recognize myself. Madam Mayor, city council members, I'm here tonight to review action item for you on behalf of Blaine, our Historic Preservation Commissioner. I am Josh Everts, our vice president for the Historic Preservation Commission. So kind of what I wanna go through tonight on the heels of what J.C. just covered was a decision on approval of funds that we had made as a commission during our last meeting. So to start with, we have also been on this journey for three years, so we've been getting regular updates to our commission on this museum project from their steering committee. So for three years, we've been hearing these updates. That all got ramped up this year with the engagement with Pat Baker in March, and those became monthly updates as to what's going on. So as a commission, we've been talking for three years about how do we get involved in this? How do we support this as a city? And what we really looked at is, as the vision matured, we were trying to figure out then how do we play a role? But it wasn't really appropriate for us to really step in until we saw execution, that we really felt as a commission, that we're stewards just like you guys are, Public Resources, and we needed to see an execution plan that was in place that we could really get behind. So some data points before I talk about kind of what our decision was, is we reviewed the comp plan as well as some of our historic preservation goals. So I wanna read a couple of those to you to kind of inform where we got to in our decision. So for our historic preservation plan, goal number three is to heighten public awareness of historic preservation in the community and improve preservation education efforts for various audiences. We felt like this was definitely, the children's museum was directed in an audience that we think is crucial, that if we look at those formative years of two to eight years old, this was a great opportunity to make the introduction of our history and who we are as a city. As we looked at the citywide comprehensive plan, there were a number of items that we felt were addressed through this initiative. One is to develop programs with the Meridian Development Corp., who was a part of this very early on and continues to support it, to encourage and support development of arts, culture, and educational facilities in our old town. Secondly, to undertake programs that will increase communities' awareness of its heritage and the economic as well as the aesthetic value of historic preservation. To encourage events and activities that celebrate the cultural heritage of Meridian. And lastly, to develop indoor/outdoor multiple-use facilities, recreation centers, fairgrounds for a varietal of recreational, educational, cultural, and sports purposes and uses. Obviously, as a historic preservation commission, we have a very meager budget, so the ability to develop facilities is simply just way outside of our purview and our ability to do those things. So as we started looking at the sponsorship opportunities, we felt it was appropriate to support the frontier exhibit, which J.C. talked about, which is wagons and supplies, teepees, building a teepee, which I wanna do, and I do wanna have my birthday there, if that's a possibility. The resin buffalo animal pelts, log cabin, and the total cost of that was $20,000, which was outside of what we would be able to do as a commission. And we also liked the idea of the public and private funding leading, that there is a role for us to play as a city to help things, but it's not our job to pay for everything. So we felt that $7,500 was... Gosh, what? Yeah. So we thought that would be an appropriate contribution to this project. And in the scope of things, that's one-third of that $20,000 exhibit, but the bigger number that J.C. and I were talking about tonight is the two-year operations budget as well as the exhibits is almost a half a million. So our contribution is just very small. You know, it's only one and a half percent of that over all two years, and felt it was very appropriate, given that we're estimating 70,000 visitors being able to go through on an annual basis. So I'm so sorry. So that's it. We thought it was appropriate, and if you have any questions, I'll try to ring it in. And if you have any questions, I'll try to rein it in and answer them.
Thank you, Josh. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kevner.
Love your enthusiasm, Josh. We, I feel like every time the HPC is before us, I say it over and over again, you guys are a commission of doers, and it's really great to see kind of the evolution of this commission. Appreciate you bringing this before us. I do have some questions I'm hoping to get some clarification on. So, you used the word sponsorship. And so, to me, in my world, sponsorship is like an annual type of financial request. And, you know, the dollars, I know that the pass of the council has increased as a result of your great work, was to fund kind of permanent things, like the app and walking tour, stuff like that. And so, this, to me, doesn't appear to be that it's permanent. Can you provide?
It's a one-time. Yeah, $7,500 is a one-time to put the exhibit in place, and then, they have operating budget that maintains that and takes care of that in the out-years.
Madam Mayor, follow-up. Has it been contemplated then that HPC will come back on an annual basis and ask for additional requests, or have you guys committed to the board that if the city were to make these funds, it's a one-time?
We've told them that this is a one-time contribution that we thought was appropriate right now. So, there wouldn't be any expectation on our part or their part that this was some kind of annual support thing from us.
Madam Mayor, one more. Josh, if I'm correct, is this 100% of your guys' kind of operating budget for the rest of the year?
No, no, no. It's our budget, Mr. Neri. I'm trying to remember, is it $18,000, $17,000, something like that? So, it is a big portion. It's probably about 40% of our budget, but it's not the whole budget. We do a lot of support of Meridian Historical Society as well as other things.
Madam Mayor, sorry, one more. And maybe this is a question for Bill. Is this request designated to come out of the 2018 budget, or is that part of...
It's 2018. It's this year.
Madam Members of the Council, Councilman Kavner, it's written for the FY18 budget. I did speak with finance to help answer a little bit more of your question. The city does do sponsorship types of things on occasion, but our CFO is very comfortable with that because the implication of sponsorship is a continuing obligation. So, if you read the agreement, it refers to it as a contribution. It was originally presented as a, related specifically to one exhibit, but he was more comfortable in saying the city's going to contribute to this under what Commissioner Everts talked about as a contribution and didn't feel it had to be tied to the specific exhibit.
Madam Mayor, and that's how I understood it when I heard the word sponsorship. I just, I wanted to make sure that we were being clear that should this be what the council decides to approve, that it's a one-time deal, not something we're committing to multi-years.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Awesome job, Josh. You know, I've never, it's been a long time since I've felt so much love in this room. It's been great. It's been great to see the passion and the excitement you guys have to get involved with kiddos. I mean, I don't think that there is enough money that can be spent on the kiddos. And so, I think this is a great use of your funds. You guys are the professionals. It's your budget. If you feel like this is what you want to use, then you have my support 100%.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
I think Councilmember Palmer's reaching for the mic.
Mr. Palmer.
So, I struggle anytime, really, that, you know, we're spending city dollars. It's always a hard thing for me to just say, yes, let's do it. And, you know, with the Boise Zoo, my family has an annual pass there. I anticipate we would likely do the same here. But, you know, while it is only a portion of what the cost may be to provide this specific exhibit, we do have to consider that it is the entire, it equates to 15 families in Meridian, their entire Meridian city portion of their property taxes. So, I understand, thinking about it that way, I struggle to tell 15 families, we're going to take everything you're paying to the city and put it to this exhibit. And I struggle with the way that we have it set up as a professional services agreement because my understanding is that type of agreement is typically used when we're contracting to somebody to provide a service to the city. Or, I guess you could call this that. But under the scope of services, it says, "In exchange for the city's and HPC's contribution is set forth herein, Children's Museum of Idaho shall include the city and HPC's contribution to the Children's Museum of Idaho with other contributors to the museum." So, that's the service they're providing, is that you're putting it in with everybody else's contribution. Not that we're getting a service. I do like the idea better of it being, this is specifically what you're going to do with the money, and having them outline, here's how much these materials are going to cost us to build this. Here's how much of this exhibit is going to be constructed for $7,500 per this schedule of costs, rather than, you know, arbitrary number of 7,500 to get most of an exhibit or the entire exhibit, I don't know, put there. So, I love the idea. Again, you know, my family, I'm sure, will buy an annual pass, but I don't know that this is the most appropriate use of tax dollars, given that we did increase tax, everyone's tax rating.
Ms. Flo Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Josh, thank you so much. I was, since I'm the liaison to the Historic Preservation Commission, I had the privilege of being there for the very passionate discussion regarding these funds. And so, they were very, very diligent. They all have a great passion for it, but they also have a passion for what they do and why they sit on the commission. And so, they were very careful to make sure that the funds of what they needed to accomplish for this year, they've had some great opportunities for doing some very wonderful things at a much reduced rate. And so, there was an opportunity there to go ahead. And Josh, I don't mean to overstep here, but just because I was able to just kind of sit there and listen to them and how they vetted this out, I think it's a very thoughtful, one-time opportunity, not to say it won't ever come again, but I just feel like they've really vetted it out well and would really, would love to see this come to fruition. And although it is tiny in the scheme of things, so that the commission can have their part of the Children's Museum, I think it's a really wonderful thing to do.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'd love to share my thoughts, but I'm on the board, so I'm trying to be unbiased.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Flo Roberts.
If there's no further discussion, I would like to move that we go ahead and approve the professional services agreement between the Children's Museum of Idaho and the City of Meridian, not to exceed $7,500.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
No.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavner.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and from both our HPC and the Children's Museum. Okay, item nine B is Resolution 18-2102. This is a reappointment of Mark Nelson on our Solid Waste Advisory Commission. Mark was appointed to fulfill a seat from someone that had stepped down, and this is reappointing him to continue that service.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 18-2102, reappointing Mark Nelson to seat two of the Solid Waste Advisory Commission.
A motion and a second. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Mayor Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavner.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes. Item nine C is a discussion about the Fuller Park Agreement with Western Ada Recreation District. So, I'll turn this over to Sean. Welcome, Sean.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Sean Wardle, Chairman of the Western Ada Recreation District. The Western Ada Recreation District was formed to build the Meridian Community Pool, which it did in the 1980s, and continues to operate that facility. It also then acquired Fuller Park, named for a former mayor of Meridian. And the park is home to a number of great events, including a 1987 Meridian Little League Championship, won by the Royals, coached by Mark Hawes, with a, featuring an all-star performance behind the plate, so.
By who? From who?
There you go. So, we're here today to talk about a consolidation in the community. We've been having this conversation a number of times. I was here before you to talk about the City of Meridian taking over operations of both the pool and the park, which rewards major assets. The direction that we heard from this body was work with the Parks Department to find some specific answers to our questions, as well as get a specific direction. And so, I'm here today to present to you some options that we have. You have in front of you a memo from Parks Director Steve Sitaway, and he's going to talk right after me. So, one of the things that we talked about is the city will buy, as you know, we had our legal council review, can Ward do this for consideration? So, we're anticipating that the park will be committed, as well as Ward will receive $1,000 from the city. The city then will do some environmental inspections. Our closing is anticipated for October 1st, 2019. The PSA, we've talked about, the reason, one of the reasons that we're working on doing this is to reduce the budget for the Western Ada Recreation District. We had some specific questions on what that means for the taxpayers. And so, given that specific question, if the Western Ada Recreation District were to, in future years, reduce their budget by the $276,000, which it currently takes to operate in this fiscal year, taxpayers would save $2.50 per $100,000 of taxable value. In addition to that, we came up with an agreement by where the Western Ada Recreation District could still be involved for the fiscal year 2019, since we've already approved our budget. And so, we're anticipating that we would enter into an agreement by which the city would begin operating at the beginning of that fiscal year, and the Western Ada Recreation District would contribute financially to that arrangement. And so, you've got that in your packet as well. And then, again, closing on October 1st, 2019. So, those are the highlights. Steve, you want to come up, and then I'll stand for questions after? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, pleased to be before you tonight and just report back that we were before you a few months ago, and the direction was to try and get together and find a way to see if we could make this transfer work. Some of our initial efforts to look at, you know, transferring ownership this October 1st ran into some challenges, but we put on creative hats, and we have what we proposed before you as a potential path forward for the transfer of Fuller Park. The, as was mentioned, the actual ownership transfer would happen about a year from now, but we would enter, starting October 1 of this year, in an operations agreement where we would take over, starting with this next fiscal year, the maintenance, operations, programming, and management of the park in exchange for Ward's payment to the city of their budget for the park of this fiscal year, which is $276,000. It was mentioned that the city would propose to purchase it for the $1,000. We would have a period of time for due diligence. The draft that you have before you, I think, suggests six months. We'd heard back that they'd like that done sooner, so we'd probably be able to work that out before the end of this calendar year and in the next 90 days. Sean's already talked about Ward's commitment to reduce their budget. One of the things that works well about this is the restroom project that's underway there. By Ward continuing to own the park, they would continue to be able to close out that project, and the warranty period over the next year could be, have them involved, which we would want and need. The agreement also does anticipate Ward agreeing to the city's use of all their maintenance equipment out at the park, vehicles, equipment, et cetera, that we would use that, starting with this new fiscal year. And the next item on the agenda would be the budget amendment that we would need for, to get ready for those planned operations of the park. We've talked before about possible needed capital improvements out there. The amendment before you would not cover all of those, but it would be enough to match the payment from Ward, so that it is a net zero-budget amendment, and allow us to move forward and assess what the real needs are out there. So, with that, I'll stand for questions, or turn the microphone back to Sean.
Thank you, Steve. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
One for either Steve or Bill. So, the agreement calls for a date, I think, of September 30th. Mr. Wardle referenced the date of October 1st. Somewhat challenging in terms of, I guess, budget process, and I'm just curious, what date are we going to be operating with? And is it that we do it on October 1st, and we plan for it in next year's budget process, or September 30th, as laid out in the agreement, and you guys would bring a budget amendment?
For the operations agreement portion, the intent would have it be an FY19 budget amendment to take over October 1st. So, we'd be asking for approval tonight of that amendment, but it does not take effect until October 1st.
That's what I was asking.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Steve, to you and your department, and Sean, to you and your organization, my sincerest gratitude in finding a way to make this all happen and be able to provide this service to the taxpayers. And despite the roundabout way to get there, I'm incredibly excited to have a chance during my one and only term to have been participating in a tax reduction. It's kind of a Christmas miracle in this building, and I'm crazy excited about it. Hope we find another way in the next year and a half to do it again somehow. But thank you for your diligent work to move all the pieces around and make this work the way that it's going to.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a procedural item. The Western Ada Recreation District has not approved this agreement. It is on our agenda for Thursday, this Thursday at noon. And so, we would anticipate approving the agreement at that meeting.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
At that point, in the next week, we would probably see the final agreements on our agenda for approval, most likely on the 25th. So, perhaps.
And Mr. Neri can weigh in, but one way that we could see this moving forward is taking any final direction from you tonight, since we don't have a final draft before you that's been approved. We could make any final tweaks and changes over the next 36 hours and get those in front of the board, and then bring it back on your consent agenda, and then, unless there's a desire for an additional presentation. But we could have that back on your consent agenda for next week, after Ward approves it.
Does that sound reasonable?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Mr. Wardle, when you got up, you talked a little bit about kind of plans related to the pool. And maybe you can provide this council with any update. Is there a desire or an openness or a willingness from Ward to maybe go through a similar exercise over the next year related to the pool?
The answer to that is yes. And I would be remiss if I did not mention that the consensus of the board on this particular item was a little bit, a little bit split. And we ultimately felt that this is a way to move forward and towards that, for this city to see some economies of scale, to make best use of the resources. But we would like to continue to have the conversation revolving the aquatic component of this. So, I personally see this as step one. And if there can be some efficiencies or even an increase in service to the community of Meridian, I'd definitely like to see that.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
As a 1981 third-place champion in the city swim meet at that pool, I encourage those conversations to continue as well. Soft spot in my heart.
Third-place champion?
That's what I called it. Just a kid.
You finished the race. That's important.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate that support. Madam Mayor, a couple more constructive questions or comments, and hats off to you and your board, and Mr. Freeman for creating a solution that does exactly what Councilman Palmer says. It's the tax savings, it's a net efficiency for our community. The agreement that you'll have Thursday to review, it'll include, the restroom completion will be done, Ward's expense during that, this upcoming fiscal year, prior to title transferring.
Correct. And we anticipated to have that done. We've seen a number of setbacks, just based on some construction issues, and so, we are committed to finishing that. It is currently planned for, and our current budget year paid for, and we'll warranty that over the course of the year as well.
Awesome. And that the equipment list is also included as part of the assets that are all acquired? That title transfers end of, or September 30 of 19 as well, along with the real property?
Correct. And we haven't heard that the Parks Department didn't want anything. Okay, so we should be good.
Great, thank you.
No further questions?
Any other questions?
So, we'll move to the discussion under the budget amendment, and Steve, do you have additional comments?
I'll make it real brief, because it was basically just presented, but you have before you a proposed FY19 budget amendment that will match the $276,000 payment from Ward. This will allow us to complete our planning to take this over October 1. And as I mentioned, the amounts for the capital have been adjusted to make it a net zero, to match the payment coming from Ward. And I'll stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I guess one question for Steve. Mr. Wardle talked about Ward's willingness to explore, kind of going through a similar process with the pool we went through with the park. Do you feel like you and your staff are equipped to be able to go through kind of a similar evaluation process, like you went through with Fuller Park?
We can certainly go through an evaluation process. Yep.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I move that we approve the budget amendment for Fuller Park, operating in capital not to exceed $276,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, just to note for the record that this budget amendment is for the 2019 budget year. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Will I ask?
Madam Mayor. Sorry. So, we're approving the budget amendment before we approve the contract, which seems a little odd, unless we have some language in there that obviously is specifically related to approval of the final contract.
I think you could make it a contingent upon the signing of the final contract. I think the reason you have the budget amendment tonight is to have authority to post-job openings.
And I'm not against it, obviously, I just want to be clear on the intent.
I think that's implied by the motion, and that it's not good until the 2019 budget year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you.
On Thursday.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Sean. Thanks, Steve. Okay, we're going into our land use part of our action items. There is a description in the agenda that talks about our public hearing process. Just to walk you through it, we will ask for staff comments on each of these agenda items prior to asking the applicant to present. They'll present their evaluation of the application, and what happened at our planning and zoning meeting, followed by the applicant, that you will have up to 15 minutes to talk about the application, and give any additional information. Public testimony then follows that, and we ask that the comments are limited to three minutes each. And there is a timer on the screen that is at the podium, so you can kind of see how much time is left. The application, or the applicant always has the final word, and then staff or counsel will ask questions of any of those that testified the applicant, or, and have discussion. And I do think it's important to note that there is a very healthy public record on many of these applications, that counsel has in advance having an opportunity to review, which is part of the consideration on the action that they take. So, with that said, I'll ask for, to open the public hearing on item 9E, which is H2018-0063. I'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the application before you is a request for a vacation. This site is located at 12855 West Auckland Street, and it's zoned R8. The final plat depicting the portion of the easement proposed to be vacated was recorded in 2017. The applicant is requesting approval to vacate the northwesterly five feet of the existing 10-foot-wide public utility easement on the southeasterly boundary of Lot 3, Block 4, Howery Lane subdivision number 1. There are no existing utilities within the portion proposed to be vacated. The easement holders have all submitted written consent, agreeing to vacate a portion of the existing easement as proposed. The applicant states that during design of the project, a pressurized irrigation line was to be located within the easement. The line has since been relocated, and the 10-foot-wide easement width is no longer necessary. In order to provide more floor plan options, the applicant requests approval to vacate a portion of the easement as proposed. Written testimony has been received from Kristy Watkins, J U B Engineers, which is the applicant's representative, and she is in agreement with the staff report. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Okay, is the applicant here? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Mayor, Councilmembers Wendy Sharif with J U B Engineers, and my business address is 250 Beechwood Avenue in Boise, Idaho. Again, we're in agreement with the staff report. This is a pretty simple vacation of an easement. We have written notification and that the utility providers are amenable to this reduction. We have an existing 10-foot easement, we're just requesting to reduce it down to five feet. So, any questions? And hopefully have this finished up this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, is there anyone signed up under this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did have one sign up for this item. Marianne Taylor signified against, but no indication of testimony.
Is there anyone who would like to provide testimony on this item? Ms. Mylum.
May we close the public hearing on H2018-0063?
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move we approve H2018-0063.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 9E. Is there any discussion on this motion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
All ayes. Okay, item 9F is a public hearing on H2018-0074. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
And just initially showing you the general location of this. It's near the intersection of Eustick and Linder, or, excuse me, McMillan and Linder. So, this is a property consists of 40.6 acres of land. Go back to the PowerPoint here. Currently zoned RUT within Ada County. It's located at 943 West McMillan Road. There's no current history with the city on this property. Comprehensive plan, future land use map designation is medium-density residential and office. The applicant is requesting to be annexed to the R4 zoning district. If you see on the zoning map in front of you, the majority of the property around this is zoned R8, with the exception of an office park directly to the east. The proposed plat, as I'll show you here, consists of 128 building lots and 10 common lots, and as I said, 40.6 acres of land in the proposed R4 zoning district. The property is proposed to develop in three phases. Gross density of the subdivision is 3.15 dwelling units per acre, a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, and an average of 9,178 square feet. There is an existing residence and associated structures that the applicant is proposing to remove from the property as part of the project, and the applicant will remove the structures prior to the first approval of the first final plat. Access, the applicant is requesting to, an exemption from council to allow for direct access to West McMillan Road. The applicant is also proposing to provide access from the extension of four other stubstreets to the surrounding subdivisions. There are two common driveways proposed for the development, and required to be constructed in accord with the UDC. A 25-foot landscape buffer is required along McMillan Road, which is considered an arterial. The applicant's also providing a 10-foot compacted gravel shoulder from the edge of pavement along McMillan Road, and the landscape there remainder with lawn and vegetative ground cover. In order to link subdivisions together, staff is of the opinion that a micropath lot should be included in the plat to connect to the Cobblefield Crossing subdivision, which is to the west. The micropath lot should be located between Lots 5 and 6 of Block 6, and the applicant shall coordinate with the Cobblefield Crossing HOA in order to link the pathways and subdivisions together. So, let me go back to the aerial and kind of show you. As you can see here, on the west-hand side, there's a pathway proposed there, and the reason staff is recommending that is because we typically like to join common lots together, if at all possible. So, there is a common lot, again, on the Cobblefield Crossing subdivision to the west, and staff's opinion is that if that were connected, it would help facilitate connectivity between the two subdivisions, and again, further to the east and to the south. The Lemp Canal traverses the north property. Per UDC, all irrigation ditches, laterals, or canals exclusive of natural waterways and water bays being used as amenities, which intersect, cross, or lie within an area being subinvited, shall be covered. The applicant is seeking a waiver from council to allow the Lemp Canal to remain untiled to the size of the facility. And you can see the Lemp Canal would be directly on the north side of the project. A minimum of 10% qualified open space is required per the UDC. Based on the area of the plat, which is 40.6 acres, a minimum of 4.06 acres of qualified open space is required, as provided by, is required by the UDC. A total of 4.78 acres, or 10.05%, is being proposed, which consists of half a street buffer along West McMillan Road, and internal common open space areas which comply with that requirement. Yeah, the developments consisting of five acres or more are required to provide this open space, as I said. And so, this, in this case, based on the area of the plat, which is, again, 40.6 acres, there is a requirement of two qualified site amenities to be provided. The applicant's proposing to provide a children's play structure, internal pathways, and a shuffleboard court as amenities for the subdivision. Proposed amenities, excuse me, the proposed building elevations, which appear to consist of a mix of stucco and stone with architectural shingles, are presented here, and the applicant is required to comply with the rear and sides of structures that face the arterial. Shall incorporate articulation through changes in two or more of the following: modulation, bays, banding, porches, balconies, material types, or other integrated architectural elements to break up and on its wall plans and roof lines. And we do this specifically for arterial roadways, that there's some architectural features that face them to add interest. Commission did recommend approval. The applicant was in favor. Becky McKay was in favor. Jody McMillan was the only commenter, and she was also in opposition. Written testimony was received by Richard Kepler. Bill Parsons presented the staff report at the Planning and Zoning Commission. There were no other staff comments. Key issues of public testimony were how the development will contribute to the overcrowding of the area's schools. Key issues of discussion by the commission were whether the direct access to McMillan should remain as part of the project, and the appropriateness of connecting a pedestrian pathway to the common lot located in the subdivision to the west. Commission changes to these two staff recommendations were they modified Condition 1.1.1A1 to read as follows: Prior to city council hearing, the applicant shall coordinate with the adjacent HOA to see if they are amenable to having a pathway connection to their common lot. I did receive an email from the applicant indicating that she had discussed this with that adjacent HOA. I'll let her discuss what she was able to find out. They also removed Condition 1.1.1A2, 1.1.3A, and 1.1.3F, and modified Condition 1.2.1 to read: Comply with all bulk use and development standards of the R4 zoning district. We had inadvertently required them to comply with the R8 zoning district, which is not what they're asking for. The applicant is also requesting direct access to West McMillan Road, which is an outstanding issue from council, as well as to leave the Lemp Canal untiled. That, we did not receive any other written testimony since the commission hearing, and I'll stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions? I see none at this time. Is the applicant here? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, members of the council. Becky McKay with Engineering Solutions, business address 1029 North Rosario, Meridian. Madam Mayor, my condolences go out to you and your family for your loss.
Thank you.
I know it's a tough time. My dad had a stroke a couple weeks ago, so understand what you've gone through. Luckily, he's improving. I'm here this evening for White Cliff Estates. As Josh indicated, the property is located just south of McMillan Road, and just east of Linder. It's a 40-acre parcel. However, it is an infill parcel. It's completely developed all the way around it. You have Paramount subdivision to the north, Cedar Springs to the east, Cobblefield Crossing to the west, and Baldwin Park number 6 to the south. All the zoning around us is either R8 or LO. There's an office complex right here. As far as the lot sizes, we have a variety of lot sizes that are joining us. They range from 4,000 to 6,000 in Cobblefield, and 6,500 square feet in Baldwin Park, 7,800 along Paramount's boundary here on the north side, and then Cedar Springs. We have about 7,400 to 7,700 square feet. The applicant on this particular project is Todd Amix. I've done multiple projects for Mr. Amix over the past years, and also did projects for his dad. I've worked for that family for 25 years. They do larger lots, and that's why we decided that the R4 designation was appropriate. As Josh indicated, our minimum lot size is 8,000 square feet. Our average lot size is around 9,170 square feet. That's basically necessary to accommodate the homes that Mr. Amix and his building team construct. They built Decatur Estates, which I think is called Sawtooth Creek along Linder Road just to the west, and Alpine Point, which is along Eagle Road. In this particular project, we did have some challenges. The Settlers' main canal runs parallel with McMillan Road. The canal is, would require a 72-inch RCP to pipe it, so it is cost-prohibitive to pipe that facility. I did have multiple discussions with Mac Myers at Settlers Irrigation District, as far as what he- far as what he will allow us to do. They've concrete lined this section. He's comfortable with a vehicular crossing right here at McMillan Road, and then he's indicated that he will allow us to landscape up to the top of bank with grass and shrubs and sprinklers, and then we would be able to install landscaping outside his easement as far as trees are concerned, and then fencing. Maintenance for the Settlers' main canal is along McMillan Road. So what I've done, I started it with Bridgetower when I did the Bridgetower project, where we worked with settlers to leave the canal intact. We used like a three-foot fence that we put at the edge, then we had our sidewalk, and that kept the little guys bicyclers from going into the canal. Some of the other developments along that McMillan corridor emulated that. It's worked well, and settlers likes it because, obviously, it keeps the small toddlers and bicyclers from accidentally getting into the waterway, but yet the waterway is visible and accessible and maintainable by the district. We had some challenges as far as this particular site has four stub streets, one on the south at Baldwin Park, two in Cobblefield, and one in Cedar Springs. So in my design, my primary concern was not to create cut-through traffic from any of these other developments, but obviously to augment that interconnectivity. And based on the number of trips that we would generate, we did have a traffic study that was done on the project, submitted to ACHD and approved by ACHD. Our particular project will generate approximately 1,208 vehicle trips per day. So really, I generate enough trips to warrant my own access to McMillan Road. ACHD evaluated that. From Fox Run to my entrance is in excess of 700 feet. ACHD, in their staff report, indicated the location of the proposed main entrance to the subdivision, Buckstone Avenue, meets district policy and should be approved. So we are asking the council for approval of a waiver for a primary access to McMillan Road. I do not have any competing approaches across the street, so as far as safety purposes, this will be operating at a level of Service C. However, I still am making connections to the adjoining developments, and when I did my neighborhood meeting, we did have a pretty good turnout from those neighbors. They were all supportive of the lower density, the larger lots, and they liked the fact that we had our own independent access. And their comment to me was, if you did not have your own independent access to McMillan, we would really object to the development because we don't want to bear the burden of their traffic. My lot sizes range from 8,000 to 17,000 square feet. As you can see, here's the parcel right here. This is a copy of the colored rendering. One of the things that we did here is we consolidated our open space. So our primary open space lot here is 2.44 acres. The Planning and Zoning Commission commended us on consolidation of our open space instead of spreading it out into smaller parcels because that gives us the ability to construct, we'll be constructing a line pond. It will have aerators in it. It will also function for storage of our 24-hour water right. The McKinney lateral is piped with a 15-inch pipe, comes down through Cedar Springs, and then we will bring it over, and that will be our irrigation feed, and our pump station will be located here with an overflow back to the Settlers' main canal. Our amenity, we have pathways that will be coming through here. As you can see, we have micro paths and linkage both to east-west, north and south. We'll have a play equipment here, gazebo, and then in the southern part, we have a secondary pocket park that links both north and south and to the west. That's .64 acres, and down there, we will have a yard shuffleboard court. Let's see. Come on, it's not like, oop, there we go, getting excited. That kind of gives you a list. As Josh indicated, we have a total of 4.11 acres of eligible open space. We do exceed the 10%. I have a list here of all of our amenities that we're proposing. This shows you kind of a blow-up of that open space area and what we're proposing. So we'll have ample area, lawn area for kids to play and recreate. This is the southern portion. As you can see, there's the shuffleboard court, and then we'll have lawn area and micro paths. This is just a copy of our plat. We are asking for a step down in density because on your comprehensive plan, this is designated a medium-density residential, three to eight dwelling units per acre. I'm at 3.15 on my gross density, so it is a step down. But as you can see, the homes that are proposed in here do require lots of this depth and width. Lot sizes range from 70 to 75 feet and up, and then 115 up to like 129 feet in depth. These are the houses that the builder team likes to build, these three-car garage. They'll be a combination of single-story and two-story. Here's another example. One issue that came up in the staff report is they did ask us to provide a micro path to the west linking the Cobblefield development. I did revise my landscape plan and my preliminary plat to include that. I contacted AMI, who is the management company for Cobblefield Estates. I spoke with Annette Ashy, and she said that the Cobblefield residents are very protective of their open space, that she would be surprised if they would allow us to make connection to their private open space, that some residents had voiced concerns about the fact that this property would develop in 2019 because their realtors had told them the property wouldn't develop for at least two to three years, guaranteed. And so she said, I will take it to the board, and I will bring it up and see what they say. We're not opposed to providing the connection. It's just, the problem is, they really don't have a micro path. As you can see, their pathway is offset about 20 feet from the boundary. So what I would do is, I would just stub my micro path, and then we could get interconnection. In looking at the two stub streets, if these stub streets did not exist, I would say that this micro path would be more important than it is. But I do have two public street connections to the west, which would also double as pedestrian access and interconnectivity. This project has more stub streets than most, and we feel that, you know, as far as these neighborhoods being able to integrate and connect and converse with each other, we've done a great job. And like I said, the street layouts that I have keep people from driving straight through and this becoming, you know, kind of a de facto collector roadway. So I'm in agreement with all the conditions as modified by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The only exception would be on the micro path. I had a discussion with Josh earlier, and I said, you know, if some language were put in there that we're encouraged to work with the Cobblefield to try to make the micro path connection happen, we're comfortable with that. I just can't have a mandate when I don't control their private open space, and they can obviously tell me no. And I had that happen at Bolano Creek. I built a micro path to nowhere because Bridgetower, the city, required me to build a micro path to the north so people could walk to Gino's easily, and Bridgetower's HOA denied removal of the fence to connect the two developments. So I have a micro path nowhere. I'd rather use those dollars to put in better play equipment, other amenities. So I guess the two issues that are critical before you is I'm asking for a waiver, obviously not to pipe the Settlers' canal. Secondly, I'm asking for direct vehicular access to McMillan Road. But from a safety perspective and from what the neighbors wish, I think it makes sense. The Plan Zoning Commission was unanimous and was fully supportive of an independent access, and it just really makes it hard for us, for construction traffic, and for marketability to not have an independent access for a project of this size. If it were small, I could understand it, but being 40 acres, it warrants its own. It generates enough that this is a collector. It's over 1,000 trips. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you, Becky. Counsel, any questions for the applicant at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milo.
All right, Becky. So if you don't put in the micro path, what extra amenities are you prepared to throw in?
I'd say bigger play equipment. They're getting more expensive over time. That's what I would propose, that they build even more elaborate play equipment.
More elaborate, okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Becky, what's your landscape plans around your irrigation pond? Obviously, I recognize the importance of that. Close proximity to the playground always gives me just a little bit of caution about creating an attractive nuisance for kids to either get into the pond and hurt themselves. And I know it looks like to the north, you've got some fencing, but I think that's along your pathway, so I'm curious about what your plans are, either in terms of landscape or fencing around the pond.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Kavner, that's a very good question. We placed the play equipment at the furthest point. We did a similar pond in Decatur or Sawtooth Creek that we also had a pedestrian pathway that led over to the middle school. So what we ended up doing with that pond was we put in wrought iron fencing. So one, you get the aesthetic beauty of the pond and the fountain and aerators, but yet you have that safety factor. Now, we, you know, when we do these ponds, we do create a safety shelf in the event that a child does get down there, so it's not a, you know, just a drop-off that it basically, the safety shelf goes out for a certain distance and then it drops down. Typically, these ponds are six to eight feet in depth because this is not in groundwater if we line it. If we get in groundwater, then those are like 20 feet deep. But the wrought iron safety fencing worked very well around Decatur because I was concerned. It was next to a ped path that a kid might just, you know, not be paying attention, go off the path, the bike goes into the pond, and we have an accident. So that's what we did in that instance.
Madam Mayor.
And clarification, I don't think that you're suggesting, but is it your plan to wrap the whole pond in the fencing or just the part that runs along the pathway?
We could do it just along here or just along these edges because we will have, you know, fencing here. It would look kind of funny if we had fencing along the rear of the lots and then fencing again on the side of the pond, but we could do, you know, something like a four-foot. I think we did a four-foot wrought iron fencing at Decatur Estates. So it's, the pond's visible, and it's safe. And the necessity for the pond is due to the delivery of the water through the McKinney lateral. We are at the end of the McKinney, and so Settlers Irrigation District said you will need to store water in order to meet peak demand.
I get that.
Any other questions at this point? Mr. Burnt?
No, no questions.
May I?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Real quick, Becky, the adjacent developments on McMillan, they haven't tiled the Lemp Canal either, have they?
No, sir.
Yeah.
It's open. And they, according to Mac Myers, he allowed them to turf right up to top of bank on the south side. And as far, I have a 47-foot separate lot, and it's 40 feet from my rear of lot to top of bank. So I would have 40 feet of green space.
Okay. Couple other questions or comments? If I recall right, the access to McMillan has excel and decel lanes as part of it?
Yes, the traffic study, Madam Mayor, Councilman Burton, apologize. The traffic study and the ACHD report are asking me to widen McMillan to 17 feet from center line, install five-foot detached sidewalk on the south side of the Settlers' Canal, and then I will build a westbound turn lane.
Are there, Madam Mayor, are there the deceleration lanes as well as you turn into it?
Yeah, it would be a westbound turn lane, so it'd be left-in. But we'll be widening, we'll widen McMillan there to 17 feet from center line, which is, that's, I think, for their three-lane minor arterial.
Okay. Madam Mayor, but not a separate decel lane necessarily?
No, a left-turn bay is what is warranted.
Okay. Madam Mayor, less, it's more of a comment than a question. On the micro path?
Yes, sir.
I think it's well-intentioned, but it's really problematic. Even if, even if you say encouraged and it's built because an HOA can change their mind and install a fence five years down the road, it really, it just seems to invite this community to use the amenities of a neighboring private community. I've seen those fences go up as well, and it just invites frustrated neighbors on both sides, so.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Burton, and that was pretty much what Annette told me. She said, I will take it to the board, but I'm pretty confident the answer will be no.
And Madam Mayor, the concern I have is if they say yes, and then in 2024, the board says no, and puts up a fence.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, that's really the risk, and now you've got it built, so it doesn't make sense to expend the resources in light of that real risk, so.
Okay.
That's my thought on the pathway.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jody McMillan signed up against and wanting to testify this evening. I don't see Jody. Also, Sam and Cindy Durazio signed up against wishing to testify.
Yes, please.
You need to come up front, please.
This is my first meeting.
That's all right. We all have our first. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Cynthia Durazio, and our address is 1249 West Tita Street. That is right in Cobblestone Crossing. And I think where they're suggesting this pathway is right where our home is, I'm pretty sure, and we bought our house last year, and we like the idea of our little cul-de-sac and the pathway to the pool, and I feel I'm against that being opened up there for other people to go through. Also, we're very concerned about the traffic. When we are coming off McMillan, we go into Zachary Way, and Zachary Way, there is only two lanes. So there, we already got the apartment complex that's going in. We don't know when that's going to open up. I'm not sure when, but I can't, we can't see how that traffic is going to be bearable. We only have a couple ways to get out, and one of them, the main part, is McMillan. So I can't see how it's even going to be bearable around there. Those apartments, I think there's 200 and something homes, apartments going in across the street from the same area that they're going to be building in. I know I might be a little late for all this, but it's a big concern about I know I might be a little late for all this, but it's a big concern about the roads, the traffic. It's sad to think that they're going to take that piece and, you know, turn it into another... I mean, it's the traffic. We're very concerned about the traffic. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh. Cynthia?
Cynthia, would you answer, would you mind answering a question? Hi. Can I go over here? Thanks. First, welcome to Meridian.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you here, and thanks for coming to our city council.
Thank you.
So, one of the things that I try and look at when I'm looking at these pathways is to provide opportunities for students to be able to walk or ride their bike to school, because one of the things that I see that frustrates me is parents who drive their kids to school who could walk or ride their bike. And so you brought up, I think, two very valid concerns. One, about being concerned about people accessing along that pathway near your cul-de-sac and then traffic. And so I'm just curious, from your perspective as somebody who lives over there, would you rather have more cars going through the streets in your neighborhood or youth riding their bikes or walking along that pathway to get to school?
Definitely the bikes, for sure. I mean, I don't approve of the whole thing going in there, is what I'm saying, the whole thing. It's just, it's too much for that. I don't understand how they can widen McMillan. There's the canal, and then there's the new apartments, and there's Paramount. I don't see how they're going to... Does anyone have an answer for me? Becky, was it Becky that was just talking, of how this will be possible for us to be able to get to work on time without having to leave? You know, I just don't see.
Madam Mayor, just one more. What would you, Becky, what would you, or Cynthia, what would you like to see done with, then, that land? I mean, it seems to me it's a low...
I haven't thought about it yet, as far as that. Like I said, we just moved in there and liked the idea that that was a nice, quiet area there. Of course, things are going to change, but I would think the roads should be done first. That's how I feel. The roads should be widened before. Otherwise, what are we going to be looking at after? It's too late. So, that's my big concern.
Thank you for being here. I really appreciate your testimony.
Thank you for your comments.
There were no other sign-ups.
Okay, this is a public hearing on item 9F. Yes, please. Denise, if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Denise LaFevere. I live at 6706 North Salvia Way. And my mom actually lives in Baldwin Park, and I spend a lot of time walking around the neighborhoods with my mom. And I, for one, like the fact that this is single-family homes. It's compatible use. It has a good transition of the subdivisions. It has nice-sized lots. And yes, I have seen the Sawtooth neighborhood, and I thought the quality of the homes that are being built over there are really nice. I do have one little bit of a question, that in Spurwing, where I live, the irrigation ponds, people are confused. They think it's amenity and the level goes up and down. So the question I have is, what is going to be done to keep that level so it doesn't go all the way down, and it appears to be a pond? So, you know, especially since it's amenity. But overall, I think it's really nice, that canal. I've walked up and down that canal. It's beautiful. Overall, I think it's a nice-looking job. The one comment that I do have back on one of this is, we're going through that new comprehensive plan, and a lot of the feedback that I hear over and over again is about the amount of open space. You know, I think in some ways, the size of the lots compensates for the 10.11% open space. But I'm really thrilled to see an R for development, so I think it's great.
Thank you, Denise. Anyone else wish to testify in this application? Okay, seeing none. Would the applicant like to make additional comment?
Becky McKay with Engineering Solutions. I'd just like to thank Cynthia for, obviously, helping us understand, you know, as a resident that's right there on our western boundary, what her thoughts are about the pathway and, obviously, you know, privacy is her number-one concern. Concerning the traffic, you know, with our independent access to McMillan Road, as far as the need to use Zachary Way, which currently has 417 vehicle trips per day, so it is a local street, you know, we'll have our own independent access, that interconnectivity, you do get some traffic back and forth, but whereas we have our own easy access, I don't see that that's going to put any undue burden upon them. In the traffic study, based on, as far as employment centers, it's estimated that 60% of our traffic will go east, 40% will go west. As far as the density, she says she's concerned about the, you know, the number of dwelling units. 3.15 is about as low as we can affordably go with the cost for improvements and for, as far as the cost of land. And Cobblefield, as far as their density is concerned, their lots are 4,000 to 6,000 square feet. So their density has got to be well up into the fours in order to achieve that. We will be widening McMillan Road. Her comment was, "I'd like to see the roads widened." We will be widening it. We will be building turn lanes. We will be building sidewalks. And so I think, you know, we're doing what we can to mitigate for our impact in this particular area. But I think it's a good fit, because you've got a lot of R8, and now you have an R4 component with 9,000-square-foot lots. And I think that's what Meridian wants, is balance. They don't want all R8 or all R4 or all R2. We want balance. As far as Ms. LaFevere's comment on the water level in that pond, it will fluctuate, obviously, depending on the delivery, but during the irrigation season, we will store that 24-hour water rate or water right, and then try to keep that pond at a specific level, and then it'll have an overflow to the Settlers Canal. During the winter months, there wouldn't be any water in it, because the purpose is or just a minimal amount, unless we put drainage water into it, which typically, if we line them, we do not. So, I mean, it's there for a function, but it also is there for a passive amenity. We will make sure that in the CCNRs, that is very clear, that the pond will fluctuate and that its purpose is for storage of irrigation water. Thank you. And I ask that you approve the project this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Council, any follow-up questions for the applicant?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
One question, and it goes back to condition 1.1.1A1 about the pathway and seeing if the HOA, adjacent HOA, is amenable to the connection before our meeting. And so I'm just, I didn't hear that we've necessarily presented to the HOA about if they are, if they're not, just that we talked to their HOA management company, and they kind of gave you a estimation?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, that is correct. We had to go through their management company, and that's typically our point of contact to these HOAs, because that's what they pay them for. And she said that she knows the board very well and that she would bring it up, but she was convinced that it was highly unlikely they would allow us to make that connection. So all I ask is, I've met the condition that the Plan Zoning Commission placed upon me that I needed to contact whoever, you know, is in charge of the HOA, which we did, and see what their thoughts are on the connection. So if you want to, you know, change that language to encourage the applicant to coordinate with the HOA and make that connection, if possible, I'm comfortable with that. Obviously, we heard from one resident that they don't want it, and she lives right next to it. So I'm sure, you know, they're going to listen to the residents over, you know, what we have to say.
Madam Mayor. Becky, I'm hearing everything you're saying. I guess there's a difference, though, to me about coming back with an answer from the HOA as opposed to have just presented to the HOA manager. So it puts us in a challenging spot. We hear from one citizen. We've always heard from you, it doesn't sound like that you're incredibly supportive of the pathway, but that the request was to come back from an answer from the HOA. And where we don't have that, it's hard for us to make a decision one way or another on that particular element. Do you see what I'm saying?
I understand, but, I mean, we have to go through these management companies. That's how we interact, because they pay them. We don't have phone numbers for board members or access to them. We go to the management companies. This, Annette told me she knows the board very well. She knows their feelings, and she said they are very protective of their open space. And she said, "I'm telling you right now that don't hold your breath, because I don't see this happening." But, she said, "I will take it to the board." Now, as far as this pedestrian pathway, it's redundant. We have two public street connections on the west side. If this were our only opportunity for pedestrian interconnectivity, I would see it as more critical, but this is almost a redundant connection when you have two public streets, one on the north, one on the south. I mean, where their staff is asking me to put it is over near the home and their pool. So they don't, obviously, want to encourage our children within our neighborhood to go to their pool facility. I've been in these battles before between HOAs. They, I've never had one open up their arms and go, "Yes, let's play nice, and your kids can use our pool, and our kids can use your playground, and bring your dogs over and walk them." It's usually the opposite. No way, Jose.
Madam Mayor.
So I know what the answer will be.
I would agree with Councilman Borton on this issue, along with Ms. McKay. I just think that it's somewhat of a moot point. I just feel like not only is there one street, there's two. And so if kiddos need to go from one subdivision to the next, it's really easy to do. And to school, to friends, to play, whatever the case may be. If this was, if there was, if there was a lack of connectivity to the west, I think that this would be a battle to fight. And in this case, I just don't think it's... I would agree with you, Becky, that it's likely not going to be approved. I guess sort of a moot point, in my opinion, so I'm in agreement.
Thank you, sir.
Becky, sorry, one more last question. Madam Mayor. Would you, I don't, we were talking about a possible fence around the pond area. Would you be willing to agree to put a fence around it just for safety precaution?
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Palmer?
I don't know if I have any questions, but, well, quite a few comments. The not tiling the canal, that makes sense. We do that all the time. Obviously, connecting to McMillan makes the most sense for everybody. When I look at the micropath idea, I mean, the neighbors to the west, I can't think of a scenario in which it would be advantageous for the neighbors to the west to want to use it to go east. And so I can't figure out why there would be any desire for them to want to connect to it. As it exists, so I'm trying to guess which one the pathway would be in here. So it looks like, it's not really a big safety concern of, you know, pedestrian safety not having that access to that other pathway and that kids or anybody else would only have to pass one, two, three, four, five houses one way or the other worth of being on a sidewalk adjacent to a local street. So I don't see it as a huge gain in pedestrian safety. When it comes to fencing the canal, the city itself, we build canal, we build ponds in our parks, not always probably right next or within that same distance from playsets, but we also build pathways along extremely dangerous canals that we're encouraging families and children to use. So I think that the safety level of what the city builds next to canals is far more dangerous than the stagnant but aerated irrigation pond that's proposed here. So I don't know that the fence would be necessary, she's expressed a willingness to build it. I think if I lived there, I'd rather not have a fence blocking the view of the potential amenity there. So I'm in favor of it without, or with those comments in mind.
Thank you. Any further questions for the applicant? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move to close the public hearing on item 9F? 9F.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing on 9F. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hales?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we approve H. 2018-0074, waiving the requirement to tile the canal, providing the waiver, whatever would be necessary to be able to make the connection to McMillan, removing the requirement to construct the micropath discussed on the west side and not requiring fencing of the irrigation pond.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Just a brief, I'm supportive of the motion. I think that ultimately, we should let the adjacent neighborhood make the decision they want to. Appreciate staff's recommendation. I think it's the right recommendation. As I said, I think this is a great development. A pathway is not the hill that I want to die on this evening. Personally, I really discourage looking at water retention ponds as amenities. I think they sometimes create more nuisances than value they provide to the community. Again, what I see here, I think, is a good piece of infill development that'll serve that area well, provide that pathway connectivity along McMillan, be good for everybody. So I'm supportive of the motion, just thought it was important to share some of my thoughts.
Well said.
Any further discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call a roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Hales, most caring. Item 9G is a public hearing that was continued from July 17th for H. 2018-0042. This was continued for a number of reasons, specifically to provide better definition and refine the request, and there was a long list, so I won't go through it, but I will turn this over to staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. On July 17th, council continued this project in order to allow the applicant time to further refine their request, as the mayor stated, based on items discussed during the public hearing. A comprehensive list of the items discussed was to be incorporated into a, excuse me, modified strike-through and underlined format of the original development agreement for council's consideration. Items to be addressed are as follows. Increase in the number of vehicle trips, specifically truck traffic. Removal of the retail component. This was discussed during the hearing. However, the applicant has included a request to keep the retail component with further parameters on the use. Limit the size of the facility to a 39-acre site. Limit the hours of operation. Secure approvals from DEQ, CDHD, and the applicable irrigation district. Submit a revised concept plan detailing the operations of the site, which is incorporated into the amended agreement. Submit a sound study, odor plan, and fire emergency plan. Define term limits on the recycling use. Further define the type of materials that are being exported, stored, and composted on the site, and stating the intended uses of said materials. And minimize impacts to adjacent neighbors. For example, installation of mufflers on specific equipment, installation of landscaping, restricting the height of the stored materials, and monitoring complaints associated with the recycling activities. On September 6th, a revised amended development agreement was submitted to the city by the applicant, as requested. Because of the controversies surrounding this project, the city mailed new public hearing notices to property owners within 1,000 feet... new public hearing notices to property owners within 1,000 feet of the property and those property owners that testified during the public hearing. This same list was sent to the applicant to use to schedule the neighborhood meeting so the applicant could discuss the proposed changes with neighbors. That meeting was held on September 5th. Some minor revisions were incorporated into the draft document as a result of that meeting. In summary, staff believes the applicant has adequately captured the items that were discussed at the public hearing in the revised document. Although the applicant has further defined the operational characteristics, if the use is to expand and proposed additional mitigation measures, staff does still have concerns with the expansion of the recycling facility, the industrial nature of the use in a residential district. Therefore, staff recommends the council deny the request based on inconsistency of the expanded use with the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance per the staff report. Many letters of public testimony has been received since the last hearing. Please see the public record for a complete list.
Thank you, Sonia. Counsel, any questions of staff? Is the applicant present? Come on forward. Thanks for joining us tonight. Go ahead. State your name for the record.
My name is Mike Magrddio, managing member of Timber Creek Recycling. My work address is 7695 South Locust Grove, Merton, Idaho. Members of council, I want to thank you for giving me another opportunity to kind of put a more collective project together or DA amendment together for these, for you guys and the surrounding neighbors. Do you have my slide put up?
Hey, Mike?
Yeah.
Walt, over here. That's all right. While you're doing that, I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time. We sort of gave you and our staff the laboring order to try and see if there's some way to craft a solution and take some time with the neighbors again. So any efforts to further that, we really appreciate.
Appreciate that. So one of the things I wanted to start out with is the current site, like the aesthetics of it. That was one of the problematic things with our neighbors, that they didn't like the looks of what it looked like. So one of the first things we did was, is we removed all the tires on site. We removed all the junk piles, concrete. We kind of broke it down and placed it as far as a base for we're going to put a future road. We built the berms up and capped them with mulch. We wanted to make them look nice and use the products that we are currently recycling. So the other thing was kind of the noise impact. We did a decibel study for a month long. We went two, two times per day, five days a week. We got eight different points around the surrounding area. We wanted to make sure we kind of got a good perspective of what the noise impact was. Two of these points, if you look on the right-hand side there, are directly kind of in line with some neighbors. We didn't know if the sound changed when it kind of went at a distance, so we made sure when we went out that far to grab those. As you can see, it kind of ranged from 40 to 50 points for the decibel levels. And for those of you that don't know what a decibel is, it's kind of a unit of measurement for the sound. And right here, oh, it's just kind of guidelines of those thresholds. It kind of gives you a perspective of the sound and examples of those noises. How we kind of went about that was, is we bought a muffler for our grinder. And we were changing the site around so much in different ways, as far as the mulch piles and different things. We kind of had a variety of different outcomes. But the one that was really back-to-back was point four. And that point was directly in line with one of our berms that we didn't change specifically for that. And we didn't move any of the piles around it. We did a back-to-back, so we could kind of get an accurate statement of what that muffler did. The muffler was supposed to be, you know, a 15 to 18 or 20 reduction. It only did 10. And we think the motor went down, but the engine fan noise was still there, plus the impact of the wood was still there. But we still reduced it a significant amount. One of the things over here on point five, six, and seven, the reason why the numbers went up, we harvested our corn. Turns out, corn's a pretty good deal for taking away sound. We also hauled away a bunch of mulch to our feedlot to prepare for the wet season. Pile placement, we found, was a big deal, too. We changed where we have our ground pile is now behind, or our ground pile is ahead of where our unground pile is to kind of help manage that sound as well. We found that that really helped. And then we also made the berms bigger, capped them with mulch, more berms, just to try and help with that sound. One of the things I am glad the neighbors brought to our attention is our fire prevention plan. We had one, we just did not have a professional put one together for us. We were doing pile monitoring, but probably wasn't up to the spec to where I think is a good point for safety. We hired a guy, Mark Larson, which the Merton Fire Department kind of provided us a few names that kind of helped us out. And guy was very professional, very sharp. We were very impressed. He put a full page or a full packet together for us. The 4,000 gallon water tank we had on site, he had us hook up fittings to where the fire department could come in and hook up immediately and have 4,000 gallons of access water. So we liked that. We do a lot of employee safety training on fire extinguishers. One thing that's not on here is an odor management plan. We still have to go through DEQ to kind of implement that, but we did talk to the neighbors about kind of having a complaint line, like an email address where they could email us and say, hey, we got an issue. And we can get to it a little faster probably than the regulatory guys can. One of the things was perceived is how much grinding we do and the illusion of the increased volume. So this is our yards that we grind at the Ada County landfill. And you can see, really, it's kind of been a flat line. You can see 2013, it was only five months, that was 60,000-ish. And really, that is, you know, it was only five months. Then we kind of got into year to year to year, and it's pretty much a flat line. Hasn't increased. Maybe some this year will increase, but nothing of the perspective of what I think the surrounding neighbors thought. One of the other things is majority of the grinding is done at the landfill. We have a size reduction, you know, so we're not going to haul, you know, material on ground down to our site, like, you know, with wood, because you grind it up, it's going to size reduce, and you're going to get more material on per load. So 78% is ground off-site, 22% of that is ground on-site. I'd say probably that is, that helps a lot with the size reduction. We only ground 35 days in between now, or in between January and now at our site. We have logs that we kind of do to track our tips, our fuel, and we have that. And I think people thought we ground every day, and we don't. Our goals are kind of to lower our carbon footprint, grind the material where it makes sense, place the material where it makes sense. We want to kind of expand the sustainable agricultural practices by composting, make the leaves more plant-ready. It frees up the elements for the plant. This is kind of a trend partnership, a trending partnership with the cities and the farms across the nation. You know, you see a lot of different government agencies, they partner with farms because it has a guaranteed in-use. But part of that, we don't want to exclude, you know, the citizens. We want to share this material. That's why we said that we wanted to kind of have that option for that retail area. But yet, it is not a have-to for this thing. Our overall goal is to have a way to make that stuff more plant-ready. So I think I'm going to turn it over to Justin.
Justin Cranny, 877 Main Street, Boise, Idaho, here representing Timber Creek Recycling. Thank you again for the opportunity we have to be before you. It's a pleasure to return and hopefully continue our discussion. And thoroughly enjoyed talking last time with all of you. Just a brief history, I mean, Sonia gave a brief recap. We left here with direction, which was nice. You wanted 10 items in the new development agreement. So we took those, we came, we revised, we sent to the city council, or city attorney and the city planner and said, here you go. Here's what we think encapsulates those 10 items with additional considerations. We listened at the hearing. We want to try and get everyone to be on the same page. Met with the city, talked, had additional concerns given to us, additional issues that need to be addressed, we revised. We sent it then to the attorney representing many of the neighbors. Now, that is kind of a point of attention, contention for several of the neighbors, that attorney was not invited to our meeting with the city. The development agreement is a contract between Timber Creek and the city, so our goal was to have that meet between, be between the city and Timber Creek. We wanted to make sure that the city's concerns were properly discussed and were not minimized or pushed aside while listening to the neighbors' concerns. Immediately upon sending the development agreement to the attorney, we set a meeting up. It was set for the September 5th before the neighborhood meeting. Unfortunately, the attorney had to cancel last minute due to client conflict, which is fine, but we rescheduled. We talked after the neighborhood meeting. So we had the neighborhood meeting, we discussed the revised development agreement, we discussed the site plan, and we listened to their comments. And as Mike indicated, we did, we did make changes. There were several changes. We added a line of trees to the west side of the property. The complaint line was an excellent success. I mean, that was one of the issues that was announced last time, was we have complaints, but we don't know who to give it to, or we give complaints and we don't get a response. Well, hey, let's set up a line. This was a great comment from the neighbors. We're glad to hear a constructive comment that would resolve a problem. We gladly took that and ran with it. That said, there's still a lot of complaints and objections filed. I'm sure you've read all the objections. There's many, 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 many pages. We've done our best. Some of these are hard to resolve. In fact, we probably can't. Mike mentioned noise. He put mufflers on there trying to minimize the noise. We're putting landscaping in. We're putting, there's berms right now. He's even put up some hay bales to try and see if that will help minimize the sound getting outside of the property. Doing what we can. That said, we realized, and I realize this belatedly, too, grinding doesn't occur every day. I mean, we're looking at, they said 90,000 of the 110,000 cubic yards of material, their ground, happens off-site. Why do they do this? Well, it keeps their green footprint green, and it keeps an economical business. So I was thinking, they're out there from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, or 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, seven days, or six days a week grinding. And some of the objections make it sound like that. You know, there's grinding going on for five to six days straight, or six days for weeks on end. It's not the case here. You know, when we have these objections, we don't know how to respond because they're not true. Now, that said, there is some noise, and we're doing our best to mitigate that noise in this development agreement. We took your 10 items, we addressed them. You probably noted that the language in the development agreement went from two pages, approximately two pages of language, to about nine. I mean, we added. You have the section five that talks about, here's what you can do. And then we had section six, which is even longer, here's what you can't do, or here's what you have to do to mitigate those damages, or I mean, those, your operations. There's still, like I said, there's still issues. Traffic is still a big one. I mean, we tried to clarify, here's what a truckload is, here's what qualifies for the cap, here's what does not count towards that cap. We tried to clean it out, try and make it clear, but we recognize there's still confusion. It was brought up at the neighborhood meeting. How do you tell? Well, we're not painting the trucks that bring recycled materials in red, and the rest can be blue. Something that obvious just isn't feasible. In this scenario, and as Mike testified at the last hearing, they have about seven a week or a day that come in, about that. So I mean, pretty low number, not anywhere near that. If there's questions about the number of truckloads, Mike does keep track. And if those records are requested, he would produce them, saying, here's how many trucks we had bring in recycled materials. Let's talk about it. That said, there's other trucks and traffic coming in and out. We have, you know, the agricultural activity still on the property, on the adjacent property. There's going to be other traffic. So we tried to clarify to the best of our ability. Couple of other points that kind of came up, there's a lot of assertion that, hey, this is not an agriculture use, this is industrial, therefore, under the development agreement, you simply can't do it. Development agreement when drafted was very broad. It simply said, Timber Creek, you can do what you're doing and keep doing it, or as you may, expand it. That's what the original development agreement said, plain language. Furthermore, in 2015, there was composting on the property. This is not new. The request is to make it explicit in the development agreement so that Mike can go and try and get a tier-two certification. It's not a new use. It's simply, we're getting the nuts and bolts and i's dotted and t's crossed. Retail sales, yes, that was initially indicated. It was probably going to come off. However, in discussions, that's really not been a point of contention. In fact, there seemed to be a little bit of favor that we interpreted on that concept. Let's give back what we're getting. So we left it in. But as Mike indicated, if that's completely objectionable, we'll strike it. Not a problem. We're not trying to give you a moving target. I know that was a big issue last time. You don't want, hey, we're pulling this out, we're pushing this in. What we have given you is a final document. There's your target. That's what we're looking for. These are the uses that Timber Creek is looking for with the restrictions Timber Creek has accepted, based on the 10 items that the council asked for, and the comments that we received from neighbors, and what we could put into there to make this, what we thought, and mitigate all potential impacts. Lastly, I do want to emphasize, Timber Creek is committed to making sure that it complies with DEQ, the Department of Ag, Central Health District, whoever governs whatever part of the process. DEQ may govern composting, Department of Ag may govern the grinding. However it falls out, the regulations, whatever they may be, how they may change, Timber Creek will comply. So you have a third party monitoring this and making sure they are complying with code. And they're inspected at a minimum annually. I also know for a fact, smell's a big issue. I read the objection smell, you know, hey, what if it smells? There's a lot of smells. I talked to DEQ about smells. What do you do about smells? And they said, well, if there is a complaint about a smell, we send two people out. Not one, two. Two people go out there and they stand at very distances and they smell. Does it stink? Now, not scientific, I admit that, but that's their process. They take two for that reason and say, okay, does it smell? Do we think it reaches a threshold that requires some type of action? If it does, they say, Timber Creek, where's your odor mitigation plan? Are you following it? No? Okay, we better start doing this. They will make sure there's compliance with that plan. If he gets, when he gets tier-two designation, there's an odor management plan in place, and they enforce it. So with that said, we've done what we can to make this address, ameliorate, and mitigate risks that exist and potential impacts that may exist on neighbors. Doing our best to be a good neighbor, want to make sure that if there are issues, the complaint line is there. They will be able to respond to it, assess, analyze, and mitigate where necessary. Any further questions?
Council, any questions at this time? Mr. Burnt?
Justin, how are you?
Good. How are you today?
I'm doing well, thank you. Last time you were here, you mentioned that you would be doing some substantial changes to the development agreement. So in your estimation, your professional opinion, what would be some examples of some major changes that you made in the development agreement?
The short answer is it went from two to nine pages. Like, we took every item and basically said, okay, how can we make this read better and be more comprehensive? I could just flip open and tell you, we explicitly state, here's the hours of operation for not only the recycling activities for the retail area. Hey, this is as much as you can do. If we're going to have a retail area, hey, it's going to be in this area. We're going to make sure that vehicles that come in there don't go off into the recycling areas. We talked about, and I think the short answer is, the biggest answer is, we really added to what the restrictions and limitations and steps that Timber Creek had to do to try and minimize impact. That's the entire section six of the development agreement. Let's work on visual impact. Hey, you've got to put a landscaping plan in. You have to do the hydro recycling materials, you can only go so high. Dust abatement, you have to make sure you water, you know. So that's the one thing, you know, one of the complaints that we pulled, that was filed, was there's dust blowing across property lines. Now, when inspected, DEQ came out and said, there's none. There's no dust blowing. But we now have steps to say, you have to water. Here's the trucks you have. Here's what you need to do to try and keep dust down. I could keep going for quite a while if you want me to. But in essence, we tried to make sure that there was more language, less on the, here's what you can do, but more of, here's what, if you do that, here's what you have to do to mitigate impact. That's the biggest change. We went from, here's what you can do, because it was literally two pages, I went through and flipped through and counted, in the original development agreement, here's what you can do, to, here's what you can do, here's how you can do it. And for the record, I went smallest gap, big gap.
Mr. Cavanagh?
Mike, or Justin, whoever wants to fill this, you referenced the sound study, and perhaps it was included in our report. I've missed it. I don't know. Can you tell us who conducted that study? It's referenced somewhat in the narrative from code enforcement, but I don't see a copy of that. I'm just hoping you can speak to who conducted that.
Did you not get a copy of the entire study that we did? Did, did you not get a copy of the, the, the entire study that we did?
Madam Mayor?
We may have, but I, I, it's possible that I, that I missed it. I'm just curious who, who is the one who conducted it, and, and if we have it and I missed it, if staff can direct me?
Uh, my wife, Tori Magardio, did. She went to every point in the site and did it.
Okay, please.
Just to make sure it's of record, I have a copy right here. I will present to the city clerk, if you're amenable, and I can deliver, I can have a copy to look at if you'd like.
Sure.
Would you like to see it first?
So, just, just so we clarify, the last one we turned in with our decimal reader against our grinder, we, we submitted it at, within five to ten feet away the grinder, and we submitted a hundred and five decimals. Code enforcement came out, inspected us after we turned in that literature and confirmed it was a hundred and five.
Verified. Great. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton?
Maybe a question for Mike or Justin or Ms. Genery. Um, one part of the structure of this is it has, it's a development agreement with the landowner, obviously, you know, the one who's entitled to encumber property and bind its use and going forward to certain conditions. But Timber Creek, there's a lot of conditions and requirements that the Timber Creek entity is agreeing to, not the landowner, as I understand it. So, I'm unsure how terms and conditions where Timber Creek agrees to do something, but the landowner doesn't, is part of a binding provision in a development agreement. It's recorded and, and encumbers that property going forward, and there's probably an easy answer that I'm missing.
Uh, Madam Mayor, Ms. uh, Members of the Council, Councilman Burton, I mean, typically in most development agreements, and we can certainly incorporate in that this, if you have a developer or property owner that are different entities, we normally would have them both sign it because we do record it against the property, so they would both have to agree. If they're separate entities, even though I think there's similar partner, similar parties in both entities, but we would require that because the county recorder won't allow us to record it without the property owner's signature on it.
And Madam Mayor, that, and that's the question. So, the, the owner, the LNG Magardio, I understand, is the property owner, but the Timber Creek has no association with the ownership of the real property. Uh, the reason I ask that is, in order to, if these terms and conditions, if it, if it were to go forward, if they're to be binding and, and everyone could adhere to them, is, is, are the terms as set forth in this development agreement truly binding, or s-
Madam Mayor, Councilman Burton, Timber Creek has no objection to signing. I think that was the intent all along.
Right.
Because, and further, has a recorded document on the property, binds the property, so should Timber Creek decide, I'm not going to comply. Well, the city could obviously bring an action against the owner, who would then say, okay, you're not complying, get off.
And, and Madam Mayor, not to get too nerdy on it, but that was kind of the question is, there are some obligations, at least the way it reads, Timber Creek agrees to do something.
Yes.
The owner developer does not. So, if Timber Creek dissolves, the obligation remains with Timber Creek, not the owner developer, and there's probably a way to clear that up, but that seemed odd.
I think the shortest answer would simply be having Timber Creek sign, which they will do.
Madam Mayor, just a couple other, oh, go ahead, Mike, if you had a comment. A couple other questions. Um, just distinctions I didn't capture, didn't understand why they were made, there's, in a provision, there's a sunset on the composting in six point nine, in twenty thirty, a potential sunset, but it's not a sunset on recycling activities, which is much broader. That appears to go in perpetuity, so what was the reason behind sunsetting one activity, but not all of them, should the circumstances that would lead to a city changing its mind in twenty thirty occur?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Burton, great question. So, the intent was, under the original development agreement, we have retained the original sunset provisions for the recycling activities. Coming now, asking for composting, have those sunset at a different time because it is a separate use. They still want to retain the original sunset provisions for the balance of the, of the recycling activities under the original development agreement. In all likelihood, they'll, they'll trigger at the same time, but just in, just as a, keeping options open, they distinguish between the two.
Okay. Ma- Madam Mayor, I apologize, I, if there's a provision that says the recycling activities also sunset?
Yes.
I don't, I missed that.
Missed it.
Sorry about that.
In section six point eight, point, six point eight, termination of recycling activities. So, the recycling activities will cease un- unless permitted by, in the UDC upon the earliest of the following. So, we have two. If the property is conveyed to a third party, it's done.
Okay.
So, if the owner was to sell to a developer for, develop it, they're done. Because obviously, they don't want probably Timber Creek to continue operating. If the development on the adjacent property occurs according to those requirements, within a thousand feet of the grinder, it's done. So, as defined, if those first two happen, the composting likewise, that happens. But if those two don't happen, but the compost in twenty thirty come back and the city council says, no more on the composting, that's gone. So, it's, it's all, for the first two, can go, or if they continue past twenty thirty and we come back to the council and the composting alone, and they say, no, that's gone.
Different triggers.
Different.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful.
Okay, any other questions at this point? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Brenda Blitman signed up to testify, uh, indicating neutral, wishing to testify. Is Brenda here? No, okay. Now, Paul Winward, against, wishing to testify.
Good evening, thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Paul Winward, eight two nine one, South Locust Grove, Meridian.
Thank you, Paul.
Facts are stubborn things, said John Adams. And whatever may be our wishes, our inclinations, the dictates of our passions, they cannot alter the facts, the evidence. It's clear the applicant is passionate, and he wants this to happen. A lot of the neighbors are passionate. We're concerned, from the questions that have been asked, for the provisions that have been requested, that the council is inclined to allow this. The facts are, as stated by the, the staff. The memorandum for this meeting stated that the, although the applicant has further defined the operational characteristics, and the proposed additional mitigating measures, staff still has concerns with the expansion, the industrial nature of the use in a residential district. Staff recommended the council deny the request for the reasons previously stated, those reasons previously stated for the July seventeenth meeting. They're still stubborn facts. The applicant is proposing heavy industrial use in an area that's zoned residential. In fact, is prohibited use in the R four district. It's not consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff said the proposed use is heavy industrial, and the current R four zoning of the property primarily allows for residential uses and other low-impact uses. Industrial uses are prohibited. Expanding the use to a more intense industrial use is also prohibited and should not be allowed through a modification to the DA. Hopefully, the council looks at those stubborn facts. One more thing, more of a procedural matter, during one of the neighborhood meetings, the applicant stated that he has a, a relationship, a friendship with Mr. Palmer, and that they had conversations and even a meeting outside of this meeting. If that is true, then we would hope that, that you refrain from further positive comments and also from voting on this issue.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
I think the only time I've ever had a conversation with Mike was when I was introduced to him at a birthday party a year or two ago. I've never spoken with him outside of that event.
Are you not friends on Facebook? I'm just curious.
Probably. I'm friends with just about anybody from the city that adds me.
Those are my concerns. Thank you, Members of the Council.
Thank you, Paul.
Brian Sosha signed up against wishing to testify.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for having me here. Um, my name is Brian Sosha. Um, my address is eighty-four oh one, South Cloverdale Road, Boise, Idaho. Um, I just became aware of this, uh, facility wanting to do recycling here. I know, I've driven by it many times, and I just thought this was allowed. Uh, me and my wife have talked about, uh, the smell, that is our main, one of our main concerns. And, uh, my biggest issue with this is, is the zoning of industrial. Uh, you have, uh, an impact of this facility, which is going to be noise around the immediate people, but my major concern is, this is R four. Uh, we bought our place about thirteen years ago, I've expanded it myself, twenty-eight-hundred square feet onto the house, built it all myself. This is my retirement. And now, my concern is, with the zoning for residential and allowing one industrial to come in here, are we creating an industrial park? We let one person in with industrial, then all of a sudden, okay, now, let's have a park here. I'm from North Dakota and population thirty-five-hundred rugby, okay? And, uh, when they were doing their plan, they created an area, an industrial park. There's no housing around it, it's all business. And what I'm concerned about is that this is going to grow instead of, uh, just being residential. I have no problem with commercial. I'd love to have a store next door where I could just walk to and get my groceries instead of, uh, driving and stuff, but the impact of the smell and the future, what is the intent? Since this is sort of, I sort of looked at a zoning map last night, and it was end of Cuna, Meridian annex to our back door, and they asked me a few years ago, do you want to be included in Meridian? I said, no, I bought the property because I want to be in Boise. All right? So, I just sort of forgot about it, and then, so I looked at the zoning map, and now it's right, uh, I don't know, hundred feet from my back property, and along a few other people's property that I know. And, uh, so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. We appreciate you joining us.
Vicky Reynolds, wished, was wishing to testify, signed up against.
If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Vicky Reynolds. I live at seventy-eight thirty-eight South Tranquility Lane, uh, within the thousand feet area of this project. And I testified here last time as well, so you've heard a lot of my thoughts already, but I just want to reiterate, this is R four zoning. It, your comprehensive plan talks about continued growth of R four and residential areas, not industrial. Um, this is just not an applicable use in a residential area. Uh, somebody mentioned the, um, retail sales obje- didn't hear any objection to the retail sales, the applicant mentioned that, and that's because, I haven't said anything about that because it's just the wrong thing in the wrong place. That's just how it is. Um, I would, uh, encourage, again, like some of the other folks have said, I would just encourage you to follow your staff recommendation. The staff continues to recommend denying this, and I would ask that you follow that staff recommendation. I would stand for any questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Christine Hurwe, wanting to testify, signed up against.
Do you have a slide? Do you? Okay. Good evening. Uh, I'm sorry that I came up as well. CJ, could you pull up that PowerPoint? We were coming together to represent the Meridian Southern Rim Coalition, so we just wanted to read the statement, um, as a, as a team.
Madam Mayor, can you get a little closer to the mic?
Yes, sorry.
Be back, thanks.
My name's Lisa Broderick, and I, uh, live at two-three-three-one East Lodge Trail Drive in Meridian, Idaho.
My name is Christine Hurwe. I live at two-three-seven-three East Akonik Drive in Meridian, Idaho.
So, um, we had a statement to read from, and I'm going to try to cut out some of the redundant conversation, um, because there's been a lot of discussion on the R four, um, zoning, which is definitely throughout our statement. But in addition to the concerns related to the R four zoning, um, we recognize that the applicant agreed he would not expand the scope of his business beyond what existed at the time of his property's annexation. Um, if you recall, the troubling testimony from last month, the Google Earth images taken in the ensuing years, which appeared to demonstrate that he was in direct violation of that current, um, agreement with the city of Meridian. We ask that you continue to deny this proposed amendment because it does not comply with the following comprehensive plan goals and objections, um, objectives. Three point oh five point oh two, to maintain the integrity of neighborhoods to preserve values and ambience of areas. Three point oh five point oh three, plan for appropriate use within rural areas, and three point oh six point oh oh, encourage compatible uses to minimize conflicts and maximize use of land.
To expand on the goals and objectives, the property is zoned R four or low to medium residential land use, and we concur with the staff, the expanded scope of operations would be industrial in nature. Further, we believe the expanded business would stretch any reasonable definition of compatible or appropriate use in a quiet rural locale. One of farm and semi- semi-rural properties, which will soon feature one of Meridian's gems, our new regional park on Lake Hazel. The coalition believes this amendment would allow a disruptive and non-conforming use defined by heavy truck traffic, food waste, dust, and more, that would devalue property values, Meridian's livability factor, and the quality of life for Timber Creek's neighbors. The city's planning staff recommends denial of the DA amendment, we concur. In conclusion, our members have an additional, very important objection to this substantial change in the land use within our city limits. Meridian is in the midst of creating a new comprehensive plan. City and civic leaders, as well as the Meridian South Southern Rim Coalition, are urging all stakeholders in Meridian to drive this important conversation and engage in the process. The coalition is promising its members that their voices will be heard. To ensure the highest level of public trust engagement in the comp plan process and to validate the promise that the city sincerely wants to, wants a vision that reflects the desires of its stakeholders, the coalition does not support substantial deviations from our current plan, code, or zoning map. We strongly believe any substantive, substantive amendments to the use, um, until the new plan is approved in twenty nineteen by the city council will, A, discourage public participation in the comp plan process, and erode public trust in the city council's commitment to the new comprehensive plan. We therefore respectfully request that the city council deny this proposed development agreement.
Thank you. Thank you. Council, any questions? Thank you for joining us.
Kathleen Britt, against, wishing to testify.
Covering some broken leg, some of this walking is a good thing, a big thing for me.
Thank you for joining us.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Kathleen Britt. I live at eight-two-five-zero South Jardine Lane in Meridian. And I do wish to go, to continue to go on record as being opposed to the application by Mike Magardio at this location that's been, uh, on the northwest corner of Locust Grove in Columbia. Um, I don't believe that anything has changed since the original application for the, uh, for the amended development agreement previously submitted, other than it becoming even more obvious, as has been stated by others, that this is an industrial operation attempting to expand into residentially zoned area to the detriment of the surrounding neighbors and in complete non-compliance with the city's comprehensive plans, current codes, future land use, and stated goals and objectives. I feel appalled about, for one thing, that, uh, instead of fixing and addressing the processes that have occurred historically- comprehensive plans, current codes, future land use, and stated goals and objectives. I feel appalled about, for one thing, that instead of fixing and addressing the processes that have occurred historically with this, that Mike was allowed to continue to go back to the drawing board again to attempt to clarify, redefine, expand his development agreement. And once again, the neighbors were not allowed to participate. I'm sure there's somebody else here that will address whatever happened with the attorneys. But once again, the neighbors were not allowed to participate. That did not feel good, particularly with what's gone on historically. I don't feel that there's any credible dispute that this application consists of, that it consists of anything other than a different and expanded land use from the original annexation and development agreement. I've lived on Jardine Lane since May of 2016 and I drive by this location probably 14 to 28 times per week. I've observed an ever-increasing expansion of operations evidenced by an increase in truck traffic, higher volumes of materials piling up on the property, higher piles of compost accumulating, and increased volume of noise during increased hours of operation. During both the week and the weekend, Mr. McGurdio told us at the last neighborhood meeting that with this proposal, he will be bringing in an even greater volume of materials, adding different types of materials, and using different processes to get to his end product. He admitted that this is why he should be moving from a tier one composting facility with the DEQ to a tier two. According to the DEQ representative that will be handling the application, should it pass, this is an industrial operation. And they would, as they would have oversight under a tier two, whereas in an agricultural tier one level, they would not. He also indicated that Mr. McGurdio has already had a recent violation on his property for processing specifically mixing materials because that is not allowed under his current operations. So again, it appears to be very clear that this is a change and expansion of what was originally being done and being allowed on his property. I'd like to stop to just veer off for one moment on the traffic issue. In my opinion, and again, I live right there on those roads, right at that intersection, it's not only the volume of trucks, it's what's happened, happening when the trucks are driving down the roads. The intersection there at Columbia and Locust Grove is two lanes in each direction, eight lanes total. In order for Mr. McGurdio's trucks, I don't care what they're doing, agricultural, red, blue, whatever, they're so big that when they attempt to turn that corner, they block all eight lanes of that traffic. He has to go into the oncoming lane to turn whichever direction he's turning. My husband was approaching the stop sign and actually had to back up to allow Mr. McGurdio's truck to finish the turn. Not only that, if he's turning off the roads to turn onto his property, he has to again go onto oncoming traffic. So I believe you guys are putting in place a park in a not-too-distant location. The city of Cuna has a high school going in right across Columbia and Meridian Road, and we're looking at a plan to be revisited in 2030. I, I don't see how traffic...
Ma'am, can you please summarize?
Am I over already?
Yes.
All right. I will. I guess one of the points that failed to make it onto the agenda here for tonight that was in the neighborhood meeting was that Mr. McGurdio was unaware of any insurance that he would have to handle any odor, dust...
I really need you to wrap up.
I am. And noise complaints, I feel like the city should be aware of that. There's no protection for us there. The complaint line, in conclusion, Madam Mayor, was something that I brought up. The intent of that was not that Mike would be handling the complaints. It was to bring to the attention that there's no one having any oversight that also has the authority to enforce those complaints, including the DEQ. And there's nothing in place to protect us from fire or anything else off-site. His site might be protection, site operations fail, fire protection, there's nothing for any of our surrounding properties. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Kathleen. No questions.
Madam Mayor, sorry. Kathleen?
Oh, Kathleen.
And either for you or for someone else who's providing testimony, you spoke, and I appreciate you trying to get a lot of information out in a very short amount of time. But the element about DEQ classifying the site as industrial use, was that a comment from somebody at DEQ?
Yes.
Is that in a letter? Is that...
It was in a comment. I had two conversations on two different occasions with Kevin Ryan.
Nothing necessarily submitted formally?
I'm not aware of any process whereby I can get anything formally. It was, I had a consistent message twice.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milo.
That was funny, that section of what you were talking about jumped at me as well. And, and so I'm just trying to understand, regardless, so if this is denied, McGurdio's, the Timber Creek Recycling still gets to continue doing what it's doing. So this is not to make it go away. He already has an agreement. It's already accepted. It was part of the annexation. So I guess where I'm confused based on what you just said is if, if he does the expansion, then you have, you all have more protections based on what you just said. DEQ is involved. He has people inspecting him, whereas now, none of that has to happen. And so if, if I was a neighbor, I guess, I would rather there be as many agencies involved making sure that his operations are noise mitigated, sound, you know, smell mitigated, fire mitigate, you know, all of those safety things that you're talking about and nuisances. If it was larger, you would be more protected than if it...
Well, I'm, I'm really glad you asked that because that was actually the part I didn't get to. So there's, there's more requirements upfront, but the problem is, once that is in place, it's largely self-reporting. And the, what I was told by the DEQ is they come out once a year, not many times up to that. That's, that's when they come out and it's with notice. So the only other way for there to be anything that happens is pursuant to complaints, and they have very limited authority with regards to respond and to, and to enforce. Again, he's already been found in violation, in violation with the Department of Agriculture. So I don't believe self-reporting is going to work. And I think the most important part of your question to me is that it's not just what is going on on his property. Because if there's a site and an operations failure and it expands to our property, and a particular concern to me is fire, because fire is kind of a when, not an if. And all it takes is a blowing ember to transfer onto one of our yards across the street, there's no water out there. A 4,000 gallon water truck isn't going to do it. A well using his sprinkler deals isn't going to do it. My understanding is you guys are planning to put in water out on Meridian and I think Linder in two years. That's two years. When there's a fire that burns down my property across the street in the meantime, where is the water going to come from? Mr. McGurdio, when he's last, the neighborhood thing, we've experienced the same thing you guys did. We're asking, what about, all of a sudden we find out there's these two 13,000 gallon fuel tanks on his property. So we want to know what's in him. He doesn't know if it's gas, if it's diesel, he doesn't know if it's a single level of aluminum, if it's a double level. Again, that's great. Apparently, somebody from the fire, whatever, required some burial so cars can't run into it. That's fabulous. But what about when you have a fire and you have an explosion? But he's unaware of that. So she says, I'm just, I'm a farm boy. I want to be a good neighbor and I'm composting my stuff. The problem with that is, we can't ever get any answers to that. If you want us to have trust in your operations, you need to be aware that that's a fire risk. When we ask that question, you need to answer that question. So I, I don't believe to answer your question, I don't believe we have any increased protections. They do a process upfront. After that, it's largely based on himself reporting. And I would like to say, there are cities across this country that have lawsuits over these issues, primarily odor, quite frankly, because again, it's in odor management, not odor elimination. They all have state agencies that are like the DEQ. They all went through a process with really intelligent people here that are trying to make a good decision. And you know what? They thought they did it right. My husband was a fire marshal in the city of Tacoma for 30 years. He saw the city of Tacoma that quite frankly had a lot more experience just, excuse me. Can't move my leg, so we're safe. You know, a lot broader land, a lot more opportunities, they did it three times. Three times they thought they got it right. Three times it failed. Three times they had lawsuits. So how much do we have to suffer? And I mean, this could all go back to just the basic thing. It's an inappropriate use in a residential area. Why would you guys expose us to that? Why would you do that? So I don't believe there are protections for us. And I appreciate you asking the question.
Madam Mayor, I guess just to respond, though, it's there already and it's not going away. They already have an agreement. So I guess a lot of, a lot of what I'm hearing from, from testimony from people is, as if this were for approval of this in the first place. And, and I, so I understand, I still kind of go back to, you know, there would be more protections. Once a year is better than never, or maybe, you know, having somebody to complain to is better than not having somebody to complain to. This was part of a, he wouldn't have annexed into the city had we not asked him to so that we could bring the water and the sewer lines through that, through there. So...
But they're not there.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for staff. Is it still two years out? Seems like it's been a lot longer than that.
I don't see anyone from Public Works here.
I don't, anybody?
I can tell you, because I drive by that road, the closest fire hydrant is cleared on Locust Grove in Lake Hazel.
If you'll wait for a moment.
Apologize.
We do have sewer brought to where we said we would. Development drives it from there.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I just, I wanted to finish your question, though, is that this, this is, you're saying, well, it's already there. The problem is, what's being considered tonight is not what's already there. It's an expansion. He's bringing in food waste. He's bringing in gypsum board and drywall. Those create a totally different gas, a totally different fire risk.
Kathleen, thank you.
I'm sorry. I thought she asked me a question.
Well, I think you've already answered it. So...
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, a question that came up from Councilwoman Kavanagh, I just want to make sure that the record is accurate, that we did receive comment from DEQ dated July 13th on this application. Next, we have James Roy Allenbaugh, signed up against wishing to testify. Don't see, okay. Brett Morgan, signed up against wishing to testify. Lisa Broderick, signed up against wishing to testify. Got there, okay. Wayne Gearhard, against. Wishing to testify. Patty Hagler, against wishing to testify.
Good evening.
Hi. Patty Hagler, I live at 7200 South Locust Grove, which is located across the road from the Timber Creek operation and where I've lived for 25 years. At the last meeting, I defined an ag operation based on my education of a master's degree in agriculture from Washington State University. This was followed by multiple questions from the council, and the mayor stated that the council doesn't deal with ag and requested additional information be researched to define agricultural operations. Per that request, I contacted two state agencies, the Idaho Department of Agriculture and the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality. The deputy director of the Idaho Department of Agriculture provided two documents, Title 22 of the Idaho statutes, and a district court decision that addressed whether composting operations are classified as agricultural. I provided these documents with my written comments. The deputy director of the Idaho Department of Agriculture stated that when an operation obtains a DEQ permit for composting, they are defined as an industrial operation and are no longer defined as an agricultural operation under Department of Ag jurisdiction. DEQ confirmed that Timber Creek has applied for and obtained a tier one permit for their composting operation. The district court ruled that under the Soil and Plant Amendment Act, the Idaho legislature stated that organic waste-derived material is exempt from the definition of soil amendments that are used in agricultural operations. They included grass clippings, leaves, weeds, bark, plantings, prunings, and other vegetative wastes, which are all materials being dumped at Timber Creek. The clear conclusion from two state agencies and a district court is Timber Creek is an industrial operation, and no amount of berms, landscaping, or straw bales can change that. Based on publicly available information, the conclusion made by any person, council, or court is, the 2016 development agreement only allows for the agricultural operation that existed at that time to operate in city R4 zoning. Timber Creek is now an industrial operation that can't be allowed to operate in city R4 residential zoning. Additionally, by executing the 2016 DA, the city is discriminating against property owners by granting preferential rights to two large landowners that annex to Meridian City. Because Timber Creek will only cease operation if one of those two property owners obtains a certificate of occupancy from the city of Meridian. The effect is, surrounding property owners can't sell or develop their property until one of those two property owners sells or develops. I'm requesting that the Meridian City Council, one, deny Timber Creek industrial expansion application because industrial operations are not allowed in residential R4 zoning, so it violates zoning code, and Timber Creek's industrial dump operation is detrimental to the surrounding residential environment, including the new Meridian City Park, due to noise, visual, dust, and odor pollution. By the way, we're not lying. That grinder will operate for days on end. Number two, enforce the 2016 DA to only allow the agricultural operation and volume that existed in 2016, which I think answers your question, which Timber Creek has blatantly violated. Number three, correct the discrimination of property owners by revising the DA agreement to read that Timber Creek's operation will cease upon notice to the city that an occupancy certificate has been issued within 1,000 feet by any city or county. Please do not grant preferential rights to one large landowner above all the other affected property owners that have invested in their property in good faith and are depending on zoning laws. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I, I appreciate your enthusiasm. But if we can respect each of the speakers and, and not applaud afterwards, I, I know you're all passionate, but we would appreciate that decorum.
Next is Loyal Gibbons, wishing to testify.
Good evening.
Council, thank you. My name is Loyal Gibbons. I live at 8350 South Jardine Lane. I've lived there about 25 years, directly south of the property. And I finally did, this last time, get notified. So thank you for that. After the last speaker, I really don't have much to say other than just to reiterate, I'll just put your attention to the actual thing you handed out tonight. It says expansion. And that's exactly what they want to do. They want to expand, what you clearly heard was, they've stepped beyond their current development agreement, which is what I testified to last time. All of these other uses, it's not ag anymore. It's become commercial. And now tier two, it only goes one higher than tier, tier, tier two, goes to tier three. And that's the biggest composting operation you can get commercially, okay? So this will be, this will be the largest composting, I mean, if they have their way, this will be the largest one in the whole area. It'll dwarf Boise and the rest of them if they get their way and the contracts they're pursuing. So it would really be in the city's best interest for the park, that, all of the residents, and all of the other testimony, you've heard it before, if we just listen to staff, listen to the neighbors, and, and have them put this in an appropriate location, which there are many of, just, just will always sell the town. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Perrison, wish to testify?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. My name is Mark Pearson. My business address is 314 South Ninth Street in Boise, Idaho. I think I'd like to give you a slightly different perspective. You've heard a lot about the problems that this has caused with the neighbors. My client, Miller Acres, owns a large piece of property in the area. And I can tell you that if this thing is to continue, if it's going to be expanded, or if it's going to be allowed to continue in what we perceive to be beyond the bounds of the original agreement, my client isn't going to develop his property. I don't think any developer with any sense is going to want to begin developing near this project until it's done. That leaves Timber Creek and the related entities in a great position. They can simply wait it out. They can pick up some more properties. And then when they're ready, they can shut this down and begin developing. The rest of us just have to wait. I think that's going to be detrimental to all the citizens of Meridian because those properties are going to sit vacant. Tax revenues are going to go down. The values are going to go down. And they're simply not going to become part of the community in a way that, that the community needs. My client believes that if his property is annexed, their property is annexed into the city, it'll be a slightly higher residential designation, and there could be apartment complexes, a little bit more dense development. Something I think everybody in the Treasure Valley understands, there's a, there's a real shortage of that sort of housing. And I guess we'll just, if this is approved, we'll just wait until they decide to cease their operations before that property can be developed. So as, certainly from our perspective, what we would ask is that this proposed expansion be denied, but also that at some point, the, the city takes a look at whether the existing use really does comply with that original development agreement. And our position is that it, it doesn't. It's been expanded well beyond that. So we'd ask that you deny the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Madam Mayor.
Mark, can, Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Mark, where exactly is your client's property, so I can get context of...
of, if you could bring up a map?
He's going to have to show me exactly which parcel is his. Is this thing, I believe it's in this area right here, is that right? How many, 60? 60 acres in that area right there. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Nicole Brown is next, wish to testify?
Good evening. Evening. My name is Nicole Brown. I live at 7524 South Locust Grove, Meridian Road. I live directly across from the Timber Creek Recycling. Mayor Tammy, City Council, let me start by saying that it is my hope that the council will deny this application. With Meridian City's annexation of the subject property, it is now ruled by your standards of R4. The reason for this annexation is that South Meridian is the fastest-growing place in Idaho. The city recognizes this by expanding services, putting in parks, and approving multiple new subdivisions. An industrial use is in direct conflict with the comprehensive plan, devaluing the current property owners in the surrounding area. The comprehensive plan was prepared to provide for the future growth in a fashion that preserves the best interests and uses for all citizens. The comprehensive plan notes the importance of thoughtful and responsible land use planning, which is why there is not any industrial zoning in this area. Note that any new improvements should respect view sheds and open space. What I've gotten to look at the last two years is a garbage pile. It was the city's intent to allow and maintain existing uses when they agreed to the DA as a temporary interim use. Unfortunately for the surrounding neighborhood, Timber Creek's current DA allowed him to increase his growth by 40%. He is currently running at 200 to 300 of that original DA. The Meridian City has done nothing to monitor, enforce, or maintain the use that was agreed to. This leaves all of us at the mercy of the industrial Timber Creek Recycling Plant. It is common knowledge that very few people want to live next door to an industrial site, especially one that is perceived as a dump, which this one is. These perceptions affect property values in a negative fashion, which in turn hurts the neighborhood and the intended use as residential. The governing bodies have made sure that Timber Creek's partners, i.e. the Ada County Landfill, Meridian Substation, Boise City Recycling and Processing Plant, who are doing the same and similar processing, recycling as Timber Creek, are all required to be in industrial zones, taking strict steps and measures to mitigate and minimize the effects on any surrounding residents. At the last hearing, the gravel pit situation was mentioned multiple times. What Timber Creek is asking for, and what you would create by even considering this application, is a condition that has all the same earmarks as the gravel pit project. As a neighbor who is directly affected daily by this operation, I will protect my home value, my view shed, and my peaceful lifestyle. Denial is the only way to protect current residents who will lose the value of their properties, be unable to sell or develop their property due to an industrial processing plant being next to their once peaceful country homes. The Timber Creek Plan has adversely impacted our rights to quiet enjoyment and put into jeopardy future development of our land, creating a very tangible financial impact to property values. Any expansion will cause further negative impact to those rights and a resulting loss of land values. I ask you to please deny this application and to have the applicant go back to his original agreement, which he is already in noncompliance.
Thank you, Nicole.
Craig Brown, would like to testify?
Madam Mayor and City Council, I'm going to allow my time to be covered by our attorney.
And who's your attorney? Who all are you representing? Okay, you'll have 10 minutes.
Jim Cox would like to testify? Signed up against.
Did you raise your hand?
I did, yes. I signed up, I raised my hand. What's been said would be redundant. I, I would only introduce myself, I'm, I'm Jim Cox, 1305 Columbia Road, right across the street from the facility, so I'm happy to let Josh represent me the best.
Thank you.
Troy Allen, signed up against wishing to testify?
And you're not part of the group that raised their hand either, correct? Okay.
No hand.
No hand. Well, I'm sorry.
Troy Allen.
If you'll please state your name and address.
Troy Allen, 775 East Columbia Road, Meridian, Idaho.
Thank you.
Councilmembers and Madam Mayor, last time I spoke, my concern was whether the current operation even fell within the parameters of an agricultural, or if it was industrial. At that ti, at this time, I would like to give you a scenario to better illustrate why current operation is industrial. If Mike was producing metal corral panels to enclose his own livestock and that of his uncle's, I think we would all agree that that could fall under the definition of farming or ranching. Now, let's say Mike is done enclosing his and his uncle's livestock, and he decides to start producing them to sell to DNB in Farm City. I believe most of us would say that, at that point, the production of corral panels has turned to industrial. This is exactly what has happened with his operation. He's grown and changed so much, he is no longer agricultural. That may not be what we're talking about right now, but I believe when Mike was annexed into the city, which I don't know which one of you were here and not, which I don't think was done properly, he might, might, have been within the guidelines of agricultural, and I believe he was going to be allowed to expand by 40%. With the volume that he's currently producing, I believe he, if he produced his records, which he did, which I would bet that that is not onsite processing that he's talking about, but offsite and onsite, and if you looked at onsite, it probably exceeds the 40% already. Since the annexation, I live right next to it, I've personally seen the increase in traffic, quantity of product being taken in and out, the increase in equipment used to process, the transformation from a once agricultural-looking piece of property to an eyesore of industry in our neighborhood. At the last meeting, President Borton suggested that Mike call his proposal what it is, and ask for rezoning to industrial, and not try to slip through the cracks with the, in the process while it being zoned R4, which suggests to me that at least one person on the council sees this request for what it is, and I hope the rest of you can look at the facts, make the correct decisions on this issue. Our community should be what you're considering when you vote, the, not the interest of one person or financial benefits are what you should consider, but please consider the personal financial impact, personal quality of life, and our community in general when you're ready to vote. Lastly, once you vote no, which I'm assuming you all are, on this project, I suggest you look closely at Mike's current operation, and you reel him back in to what he was doing prior to the questionable annexation. You asked a question to his attorney, what changed? He never answered it, very little is the answer to that. Have you guys all read the 71 letters? Everybody read it? Everybody read all the letters and from the attorneys, so, okay, good. I, I think that is critical that you guys do that, because I think out of the 71, 60, some of them are against, and very few are for, so, I don't know if there's any questions. I know your question last time was what industrial and agricultural, I hope that explained a little bit better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dean Simmons is next, wish to testify?
Hi. My name is Dean Simons, 8151 South Locust Grove.
Thank you.
I don't have any new information for you, but what I have is the perspective of a really close, downwind neighbor. We, I'm not against growth, and I don't, I'm generally for recycling, but just like almost everybody else out there, I'm really, really worried about our property values. It's the biggest investment I have. And probably more than that, if you allow food waste, I'm really worried about quality of life. You know, when, when Mike shuts off his equipment at 6 o'clock and goes home, the noise stops and the dust stops, but the smell doesn't go away. And if there's food waste up there, it's going to smell like the landfill. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie Allen would like to testify?
I'm Debbie Allen. I live at 775 East Columbia Road in Meridian. I'm right across the street from the dump. So here we are again, providing testimony that this industrial business is incompatible with the proposed location. We've explained that it violates your own zoning guidelines, that it will devastate the property values of everyone around it. It'll be detrimental to the quality of life for all of us who live nearby, and it poses a fire hazard. It'll likely cause leaching into the irrigation system due to the piles of all kinds of stuff, I guess, I'm not sure what all is in those piles, sitting next to the canals. It'll put a tremendous burden on the roadways and a dramatic increase in truck traffic. One of the things I wanted to mention, and she left, council member that asked about it already being a recycle center, and how would that change? Well, the whole point of this is that it's going to increase exponentially, so it's already bad, it's already well beyond what the original development agreement allowed, and if you approve it, it's going to be exponentially worse than what it is right now, which is already detrimental to us. Last time we met, you gave Mr. Magrddio the opportunity to rewrite his proposal, despite all the testimony against the proposal. He was supposed to, and said he would, consult with the neighbors to come up with something that would work for everyone. He didn't. He made it look like he kind of was trying. As was mentioned already, they didn't let the attorney meet with them as, to be a part of that planning process, to have some input in how it was crafted and designed. Mike said that he would restrict the amount of land at 36 acres, but in Section 6.1, he states that he would store and use processed recycle materials on the balance of the property, so he didn't really restrict the land. He said he would take food waste off the table, but it's there. It also adds garden waste to it, and as several people have mentioned, the food products are a huge source of smell, and that's something that everybody is really fearful of. The previous agreement stated things like "and other such products," "and other as required," things like that, and that was part of the problem, is that there were no boundaries. But the new agreement has its own section of "and whatever else we want to do." That's Section 527 on activities. And then in Section 5.3, it also says, "but not limiting," and related activities. So there's still all this open-ended, we can expand as much as we want, we can do all these other things because they fall within other activities. There are still no boundaries. Furthermore, Section 642 states that Timber Creek will keep the height of the piles of recycling materials at the greater of 25 feet, or what the fire department will allow. It doesn't say "up to" or "not greater than," it says it's going to keep the piles at the max. That's a little scary. The proposal seems worse than the first one. This is a prime example of one person with great resource, who is apparently so well-connected that he trudges ahead regardless of zoning regulations or development agreements, as he has over the summer. He receives all kinds of exceptions. Can I just summarize?
Please.
If you approve this proposal, you're causing all that this greater majority of property owners have put into our farms to simply evaporate for the sake of one well-connected entrepreneur who wants to operate where it's convenient. Mike is the only one who can pick up what he's got going on and move to a location away from a neighborhood, and he should move it. It's a dump. The rest of us can't relocate the decades of time, work, and finances that we've invested into our farms and homes. We can't move the trees we've planted. We can't move the concrete with our children's handprints in it. We can't move the homes that we've built. But he can, and he should. And I do have one picture, just as a little bit of perspective. You've, you've heard about the piles of stuff. Here's a great big piece of equipment, you can see how it's dwarfed by this pile, and here's a person here, and you can see how it's, the person is just a speck. That's how big the piles are.
Do you want to show that to those behind you, too? Thank you, Debbie. Council, any questions? Is there a chance we can get a copy of?
Yeah, I've already got your email, I'll send it to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Sader is next, wishing to testify?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
My name is Eric Sader. I live at 1102 Ruby Drive in Nampa. I bought that house back in February, but for the prior nearly 16 years, I lived within a mile of the site. That's where my parents and most of my family still live today, so I visit that quite often. Madam Mayor, council members, I'll try not to be too redundant with what's already been covered, but I had four main points I'd like to hit. First one being ag versus industrial, a lot has already been said about this, but I think it's really the linchpin of this whole proposal. He's trying to qualify his operation as agricultural, because the product that he's creating is used for agricultural mostly. As admitted, he also sells, and intends to sell more of it, but really, if you look at the operation, it's the operation that's industrial and is out of place in the zoning. So hopefully that provides some clarity. Agricultural product, industrial operation. Maybe a comparison would be, I don't think any of you would allow Simplot to build a fertilizer plant on that site, even though the products it creates would be for agricultural use. The second point is that he has exceeded the original development agreement, as been mentioned by several people, and that there are no enforcement mechanisms around that. Complaints have been filed, and basically, nothing can be done about it. And yet he is wanting to expand and grow under a development agreement, which means this operation will get bigger, louder, and more obnoxious, but still with no recourse for the neighbors around. Third point, I sense a severe lack of trust in Mike Magrddio by all the neighbors. I don't know him personally, I'm not here to impugn his character. All I can do is observe him in the interactions I've had, which has been three neighborhood meetings, two of them being the official required ones, one being a voluntary one, and two public hearings, including the one tonight here. Through those observations, he seems to me to be, not just me, but several people, less than straightforward with us on several questions we've had about his operation, shifting in his positions and proposals, and only giving lip service to our concerns. The original development agreement and amendment that was heard the last hearing were drafted to be as wide as possible, so that upon approval, he could do whatever he wanted without any recourse for us. This proposal, as been pointed out, isn't any better. As with everything, it is based only on his word, that his plans for odor, noise, and safety will be effective, and they will be enforced, but because of this lack of trust and belief in him, no one believes that, A, he'll either carry out fully, or B, comply with it. Lastly, sad to say, I think there's a severe lack of trust in you and this process. It's been laid out very clearly by multiple attorneys and dozens of neighbors and your own staff, that this operation shouldn't be allowed at the site, and if anything, should only be able to operate under a C-U. only be able to operate under a CUP for ag only, at a much smaller scale than it is today, let alone what is being proposed. Last hearing, a poor proposal was submitted with a lot of last-second verbal changes. It should have been voted down, enforced to go through a CUP application process. Just have a couple sentences left. Also, as pointed out by the attorneys, et cetera, you have failed to enforce and uphold your own code currently with regard to the zoning, DEAs, and CUPs. And so this leaves us to question how we can trust you to follow the law when you haven't to this point, especially when it's your responsibility as elected officials to uphold it. And how can we even expect you to listen to us when the majority of us don't even live in this Meridian city limits? This proposal will affect a large number of people, not only inside but outside your jurisdiction, and the fact that it's got to this point is very troubling to many people. So I just respectfully ask that you vote this proposal down and even cause the applicant to scale back his operation significantly and apply for a CUP in order to continue operating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. I know there's more testimony, and I don't have a question. I just think it's important that we put something that's on the record. I've heard some lot of inferences tonight and comments about questioning that you can't trust the city council, and that makes me really, really sad. Likewise, we would never say that we can't trust the public. Trust goes both ways. I trust that when the applicant gets up here that he or she are being forthright, just like when every one of you get up here and testify, I trust that you're going to be forthright. So I would hope, whether you live in Meridian or not, that you would trust that the city council is elected to represent the community as a whole, to listen to both sides of this issue and to render a decision. And at the end of the day, you can choose to agree with that decision or not, but I really take exception with the repeated commentary that is questioning the integrity of this city council. And so I would ask that for the remainder of the testimony, you're welcome to share your thoughts and feelings, but if we continue to question the integrity of individuals, that to me just is not representative of our community whether you live here or not. So I would ask respectfully that you continue to provide your testimony to the issues at hand and not defer to salacious or inflammatory comments, because I think that takes away from this public process, which is designed to be respectful and kind. So Madam Mayor, I apologize for interrupting the testimony. I just, I think it's important that we level set before we continue on with further testimony.
I think one point that might not be understood is, we have to consider every application that comes in front of us fairly and respectfully. So we don't go out and pick what the applications are, but this council does have to listen to everyone respectfully and give it fair and due consideration. So I think that probably is an important clarification.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ryan L. signed up to testify.
Ryan Larson, four-three-one-two South Leonardo in Meridian.
That's Ryan?
Ryan Larson.
Thank you.
Yep. So in typical millennial fashion, I have to have my phone instead of a printed piece of paper, right? So I oppose the expansion of the Timber Creek project for the following reasons. Number one, this area is not zoned for industrial use. In my opinion, zoning rules are supposed to mean something. People rely on these zoning rules and make life decisions based on these rules. Number two, the potential for unwanted and unpleasant smells which are associated with this type of facility, especially one that will be this large. Number three, there is a brand-new regional park less than a mile from this location. It would be a shame to have the smells make this park unenjoyable for all the kids after spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions. I don't know the cost of this project, but I imagine it's very large.
Millions.
So there you go, millions, thank you. This has the potential to make this park unenjoyable for everyone. I grew up in Minnesota, and all of our landfill compost areas were many, many, many miles out of town. They were always in remote parts of the county. Why does this project need to be so very close to the regional park, people, and subdivisions? Number five, there is a plethora of growth in South Meridian. They are building on all sides of me, east, west, north, south. And this project, if it goes forward, will impact everybody new, as well as the existing current residents. Number six, if approved, the negative ramifications will always be there, twenty-four hours a day, and there will be no turning back at that point. Any irritating smell is always there. Your nose goes with you wherever you go. Number seven, potential loss of enjoyment of home and quality of life. I love this time of year, fall, it's probably the best, college football, gets cooler, right? Eating out on your patio, sleeping with the window open, it'd be a travesty if I'm not able to open my window and sleep anymore, eat with my son out on the patio because of the obnoxious smell. Overall, I oppose the project for the above seven reasons. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ryan.
Sheila Miller signed up to testify.
Good evening. Sheila Miller, four-one-seven-zero North Azalea Lane, Boise. Madam Mayor, Meridian City Council, the land I'm speaking about does a but, does, sorry, does a but with Mr. McGirtio's land. Much of this land has been in my family for over one hundred years. Though I did not grow up on this farm, my dad and my uncle did. My sisters and I spent nearly every holiday, most weekends during hunting season, weeks in the summer, we floated that canal, learned to ride horses, feed the livestock. We gathered grandma's eggs, even though we hated her chickens. Sorry. We picked up so many rocks, we thought Grandpa Harvey was growing rock. Traffic on Lake Hazel then was scarce. We did hear an occasional tractor, truck, cars on the road, and guns during hunting season. The neighbors were longtime, single families that usually grew enough food to feed just their families. Yet times change, families move, farms are sold, and the land is subdivided. New families moved to Ada County to enjoy a rural lifestyle. The area now is a fair, is a nice mix of single-family homes with families that live in their homes, they live there, and some remaining farms. Changing the zoning of Mike's land to a greatly expanded industrial designation is going to change the character of this area. A change that allows for an increase in trucks, tractors, grinding of concrete. In its smell is an industrial business which does not belong in a family-populated and zoned area, but it does belong in a lesser-populated area. A change in character cannot be mitigated ever. And I would just ask the council to listen to all the fine people that testified tonight and how much they've put into their dwellings and their homes and their farms, and this is, there's a legal, but there's also an emotional attachment to this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
Rochelle Klein signed up to testify.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, Rochelle Klein with Republic Services, twenty-one-thirty West Franklin here in Meridian. And I wasn't sure if I was going to testify, but I think after listening, I just want to bring some clarity to some of the things you've heard tonight. We run an industrial-use property about a mile from here. We've owned it for six years. It's been there for quite a long time. It's the Meridian Transfer Station. And just a couple of points I want to make tonight. DEQ permits sites like ours, but Central District Health regulates them, and that's a very serious job, and they do come in unannounced, they check in regularly. There is an odor mitigation plan, and we have to follow up on that. That's not subjective, it's very objective. If you, if someone calls in a complaint, we have to look at what was going on. I can only speak for our operation, but I would assume, they're strict with us, I would assume, and same health district, it would apply to Timber Creek as well. But, you know, we run a compost facility in Portland, and it's actually Corvallis, it's called Pacific Region Compost. We were the ones who suggested that odor complaint line, because we have one there, and we're good neighbors. So every time that a complaint comes in, we look at exactly what's going on, if we're grinding, if we're windrowing, what the wind was like. You know, we take all those things into consideration, and we amend regularly to make sure that we're good neighbors. And here, you know, we have growth surrounding us with the transfer station, and, you know, we take that seriously as well if people complain. And the health district, we welcome them out anytime, and they do check in multiple times per year. A DEQ comes once a year, the health district comes regularly checked to make sure we're compliant. And I know that right now, his operation might fall under that threshold, but if he changes use, that there is regulation surrounding that. And the food waste part is actually not post-consumer food, it's produce scrap, which is probably the same thing we're allowed to take. So it's really produce scrap, it's not post-consumer meat, there's no meat and bones and things like that. It's trimmings from preparing meals of just produce only. And so just to bring some context to what you've heard tonight, I want to make sure you know that you can coexist pretty peacefully, and I know that they're an old Meridian family as well, I think you've heard from quite a few tonight. They may or may not say it. I mean, what they're proposing is actually a competitive site to ours. We run the Boise Twenty Mile South compost facility, and what Timber Creek is proposing would be a competing site with ours, but I can't think of a better family to bring forth a project like this. And we would welcome them to the industry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Rochelle.
Rochelle, can you give us kind of a summary of the different type of materials that you take in at the transfer station?
Sure. Councilman Kavanagh, that on a daily basis, we take municipal solid waste, we take dead animals under a certain weight, we take in, gosh, we take in wood, we take in appliances, we take in recyclables like cardboard and, you know, plastics and aluminum and tin cans and things like that. So it's really, it's designed, with the exception of household hazardous waste, which is only collected Mondays from noon to seven, everything else that you can take to the landfill, you can bring to us, so tires and everything like that.
Yard waste.
Yard waste and, yeah, garbage, commercial and industrial and residential waste.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, no others on the sign-in sheet indicated that they wished to testify, however, many, many others did sign the sheet. So I can read all of those names at this time, if you'd like me to do that, or if there's a different way you'd like to handle that.
We do have that in the record. I would ask, before we ask the attorney to have his remarks, is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony?
Yes. Mayor DeWort and City Council, Brenda Blutman, eighty-four-sixty South Locust Grove. I'm one-quarter mile south of the property, so I'm just outside the permitting process or the notice process, so I didn't get notified about any of this activity. You should have letters from me, though, in your packets. And a couple of points that I'd like to make in the packets is that your planning and zoning team is recommending that this not be approved. These people have lots of training and they understand the process, and I think one of the reasons that they're not recommending that it be approved is because of the process that Ms. Klein just described, which is the conditional use process, where you go through and have DEQ and have Central District Health be responsible for making sure that the rules are followed. In my experiences, development agreements are very loose, and the city has very few teeth to follow up on those development agreements. And I'm worried by not having the proper legal processes in place, that there won't be any monitoring of the site. I've been at my property for seventeen years. I'm a farm girl, I grew up three miles from this site, very familiar with the normal agricultural smells. I would say that composting wood is different than manure, so it's just a different smell and a different process that we've had for the last three to five years. In my packet that I submitted online, there's pictures of the site that Ms. Klein mentioned, that's Boise City's composting site. The winrows are six to ten, six to eight feet tall, which is very different than the twenty-five to thirty-five feet piles that we see outside our windows. So I'm thinking that I'm less worried about the winrows that are eight feet tall than I am about this huge pile that in the last ten years has burned twice for long periods of time, and all the toxic stuff came out, so. The other thing is, you'll notice in my packet, I did some math for you, fifty-six garbage trucks, ten to twenty-five cubic yards are in the garbage truck, which is three to nine million cubic feet of garbage a year. So that's a lot of stuff, and it seems to me like that's more industrial than agricultural. So that's my testimony.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
My name's Monty Anderson. I'm at seventeen-thirty Suzanne Drive, Meridian, Idaho. I'm just north of the feedlot. I've been there about sixteen years. I'd like to ask these police officers to kind of watch me, because I think I'm the only one, the neighbor that's for McGirtio, so if I could be asked, you know, just joke. What I'd like to talk and stress is sustainability. I've been involved in agriculture for fifty-seven years. I was raised on a potato farm, I was the first one to go to college. I was going to go learn the processors for two years, thirty-five years, I'm still learning the processors. About ten years ago, some of our customers, and Tammy, I'm direct competitors with your husband, but I know him well, we work sustainability in a non-compete fashion. About ten years ago, our major customers, McDonald's, Cisco, the shareholders, asked about sustainability, and not only potatoes, but farming, because we look at all crops. I led that effort for the potato PSI. It was the first time that we got together as an industry. We had five processors, Lamb Weston, Heinz, which is Orida, Simplot, Basic American Cavendish, Cisco, McDonald's, the IPM Institute, the National Potato Council, Canadian Potato Council, I can go on and on, but I think the key is with sustainability. Growers are being, especially small growers, are being forced many different things. We looked at our growers, and they were being asked five hundred different things to do, and it was growing to a thousand. So what we took, we took the bull by the horns, and we developed the first worldwide one sustainability initiative. And I can tell you that I'm proud of Mike, his father, Gary, my great-grandfather also homesteaded, and they called it not sustainability, they called it survivability. And so Mike's taken this to the next level. He's doing this out of necessity for their operation. I like the definition of sustainability, the ability to keep making what they make. And so I think that's what Mike, Tori, the McGirtio family's doing. I'm a hundred percent favorable for him. I know there's a lot of people here that are against him, but I can guarantee you that there's a lot of citizens in Meridian and other corporate folks that would be for him, so they could have a way to recycle their waste. And when we talk waste, my family was one of the first to feed potato waste way back in the fifties, when we built a potato plant. And so we've been doing this for years. I think Gary's been feeding corn to his cattle for years and years, and so we talked about food waste. They keep calling this industrial, maybe the coin, but I would call it sustainable. So anyway, I guess I would strongly recommend that we approve this. It's sustainable, it's the right thing to do. As far as character, I think we should be celebrating Mike and Tori, the McGirtio families' honesty, integrity, charisma, their innovation, entrepreneurship, taking it to the next level. So, thank you.
Thank you. On the very back.
My name is Ken Jantsch. I'll be nice tonight. I refer to your, to your processing facility or McGirtio's as a dump. I'm sorry, I haven't changed my opinion. I live at eighty-four-forty South Locust Grove Row, diagonally across from the processing facility. My wife and I and family have a hundred-and-eleven acres. I'm also agriculture. You guys, you, the city, will be my neighbors, or are my neighbors. How would you like it if I put in a swine-raising process for which you had no authority to stop? I could go to the county. I wouldn't do that to my neighbors. Mike's doing it to us. I went to his, well, let me talk first about the amendment. Broadly, a lot of people have talked about it, I'm going to make mine short. Broadly, the amendment development agreement- Broadly, the amendment development agreement limits McGurdio to do whatever he says it says. Think about that. Have your attorneys read it close. There's lots of or otherwise self-monitoring. I'm curious about the weather station he's going to put in. Is he going to run the weather station or is the city? When he runs the weather station, it'll do whatever he says it should. Another question I have, the party is to the agreement. There's lots of LLCs. And the attorneys know that LLC stands for limited liability company. Usually those are used for tax reporting purposes. But many times they're used for what the LLC stands for, limited liability. So my question is, has some financial expert reviewed the financial statements of the companies listed in the amendment agreement? I think you should if you haven't. The other issue which was brought up earlier is like facilities. And I heard you guys comment about shutting down gravel pit last meeting I was here. This didn't ain't different. And that concrete that was laying out there in that yard, if you looked at that last picture that was put up there, it's still there. He just knocked the pile down. He's going to cover it up with something. You won't be able to see it. It may have been already covered up. And he added a 16-foot-high wall in the last two or three days. Okay, I'll hurry up and get done. I have one more real issue. The property that he claimed to own for all these years, he didn't. They bought it from, they got it somehow from Greg Johnson, who had planned a residential area a few years ago before he decided not to do it. And anyway, McGurdio's ended up with the property. So that property hasn't been McGurdio property for more than about a half a dozen years. And in fairness to all of us in this open committee meeting, I'm going to ask a question which will make you all mad. Have any of you received gifts, campaign contributions, or have any contractual arrangements with anyone by the name McGurdio? If you do, please recuse yourself. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Yeah, I'll answer your question. I don't know why it would make us mad. Um, no, I did take a Spanish class in eighth grade. I think it was his aunt was my Spanish teacher. So that's my only other relationship with a McGurdio from his family.
I have a question.
But no other, no, no contributions, no other benefit.
This could be asked.
Okay.
Certainly.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Bylon.
I have not received any contributions or have any contractual agreements with anybody named McGurdio. However, I must disclose, I think we are friends on Facebook. I could double check.
Oh, I'm sorry. This, this young lady first, Greg. Yes. Thank you for that clarification. We, we were left wondering. Good evening.
Good evening. I think I'm doing wrong, something wrong because last time I was here, my name didn't got called either. But before I start my time, I just want to tell you I'm really sorry to hear about the death in your family.
Thank you.
My husband passed away from cancer just a short time ago and it's hard. So my thoughts go out to your family and especially your mom.
And mine to you too.
Thank you. Um, I'm not going to speak as eloquently as everybody else. I get up at four in the morning, so I'm a little bit on the tired side.
Can you give us your name and address first?
Oh, I apologize. I am tired. It's Andrea Harris. I actually live in Kuna. I'm at 649 East Raisin Court. It's a new development called Patagonia. And I found out about this from the Homeowners Association, which brought me out here last time. I'm new to Idaho. I came from Southern California with a brief stop in Arizona. And I was temporarily, little, I can't talk, temporarily living in Meridian. And I didn't know the area. And when we moved from Meridian to Kuna, that was the first time I took Locust Grove. And it was kind of a surprise because when I saw this gentleman's property, to be honest, it looked like a dump. It really did. And I asked why in my paperwork didn't it not say that I was near a landfill? Because that really is what it looked like. Some of the pictures I see, they just don't look, it doesn't look like that. And sir, I'm being respectful and I'm, you know, I'm, and I'm, I'm nice all the time. I really am. So that's the first part is it really is an eyesore. It truly is. The other thing I want to address is the traffic. It's just a two-lane highway and I use that to go back and forth from Kuna to Meridian. I can't even imagine what it would be like with all those trucks, those commercial trucks on the road. Somebody spoke about the turns and I've been behind some of those trucks and it's just not the right setting. And I don't know how to pronounce your name, sir, so I'll just say Mike. It would just, you sound like a great person, an entrepreneur. You've got all these great ideas, but it just seems that this is the right, maybe the right idea, but in the wrong location. The other thing I want to address is the fire, where, the fire hazard, I suppose. When I came from Arizona, I was in a small mountain community called Happy Jack. It was all homes on about, each of them was on about two acres. The only business, if you will, in the development was a fire station. Exactly one month after I moved to Idaho, I'm on, I've been with the Red Cross for almost 30 years as a volunteer. One month to the day, I got a disaster call to go out to Arizona because a fire burned through that development and the fire station was right there. Thirty-two homes burned to the ground, 32. With the fire station was right there and I drive around Kuna and I drive to Meridian. And I don't think I've ever seen a fire station anywhere near this development. I can't even imagine if there was an issue, what would happen? And we hear about these, the fires and I've been to Hurricane Katrina. I've been to all of those. But when someone you know is impacted, it really hits home. And people that I know and love lost everything. So I don't know what the fire mitigation, for three seconds, oh my goodness, what the fire mitigation process is. Can I please talk just a little longer?
If you'll just summarize.
I will, I promise. You know, we, we began the evening with an invocation and I would ask everybody to use your wisdom when you make your decision. But the Lord also says he's not looking for how much stuff someone has. He's looking at the relationships that you have with the rest of humanity. And Mike, your neighbors, your friends, they're standing up and begging you, begging you that you're impacting them so negatively. Go forward with your idea, but just do it in a way that everybody's going to benefit. Thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate your time. Thank you, everybody, and good night.
Thank you.
My name is Greg Johnson. I live at 2037 East Turza in Meridian. I did own this property for about 15 years. I did submit an application to Ada County to do a non-farm development on it. And these same neighbors, all that you've heard tonight, most of them were opposed to that one-acre lot subdivision with 75% of the ground remaining agriculture. They said it was much too dense. They said there would be way too much traffic. And they said that it would ruin their wells because we would be drilling wells for residential homes. And we were also required by the Ada County to put in a sewer system rather than septic. And so I did not develop it because it wasn't unaproposable. It's interesting though, without the opposition of the neighbors, it probably would have been developed. And they wouldn't have this issue because there'd be homes where this has been proposed. I also am in favor of it because it's applying for a short window. Mr. McGurdio knows that development is coming this way. He only plans on being here, I think approximately 10 years. It is very beneficial to the building community to have a place that we can take building materials from our job sites that are now garbage. We used to have to haul it to the landfill. It costs a lot of money to haul it that distance to the landfill. Plus we paid a dump fee. My estimate is we spent 1,500 to 2,000 per house to get rid of our garbage at that time. That is now saved because we have a facility that's close. And we're also not filling up a landfill needlessly because it's being recycled. I think those are very good benefits for our community. I agree that eventually it should be moved out onto the desert or somewhere more appropriate for industrial. But on a temporary basis of 10 years, and 10 years is really pretty short. We will probably grow now that the sewer is available in this area. It will fill in from Amity to Lake Hazel in about a 10-year period of time. That's consistent with Victory to Amity in the previous years. And, uh, I think we're growing about as fast as we can grow right now. We're using all the manpower we have to build homes and to build subdivisions, but we can't go any faster. So, um, I would say, uh, Mike McGurdio has been a very good neighbor. He's always done what he said he would do, uh, as far as I'm concerned. And I've had dealings with him over the last 15 years and with his father. They're great citizens. They're good farmers. They're good cattle people. And now Mike is proving that he's a very good recycle person.
Thank you.
I would very much support this on a temporary basis. And maybe we're all crazy, but developers are not shying away from this area. They will, this will develop and the McGurdio's will eventually move out to an industrial park or some other place with this operation.
Thank you, Greg. Council, any questions?
Yes, Denise. My name is Denise LaFevere. I'm at 6706 North Salvia Way. And as everybody knows, we're painfully going through the process to change the comprehensive plan. And curiosity got the best of me on this one. And I was looking at the process and which this went through. And when I was looking at the documents, I, I noticed that this was an annexation application originally at H20150019. Forty-one parcel application owners came together, of which the middle of those, it was surrounded by the middle of people that chose not to join the application. So there were owners in that process that chose not to annex. Gary Mungerto, I probably slaughtered that, signed a declaration of consent to annexation. He chose to do that. The, during that process, the folks that all got together and worked with the city chose to go back and have proposed zoning of R4, R8, R15, and G, CG. They went through the public testimony process and the development agreement's part of that process. Okay? And listening to all the residents that have talked, it's kind of clear to me that there was some kind of operational creep that went on in this process. There would be no need for an application if there wasn't a desire for change. And when I went back through, and this is what's causing me to stand up here today, when I went back through and I, and I actually looked at the development agreement, it looks to me like it changed in nature. It went from an R4 with the current operations to it almost looks like it's changing to industrial. Personally, I think this would be better as rezoned application, to deny this and ask them to do a rezone application as industrial. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. And then we'll get to the representative in the back and we'll... I like your ringtone.
Huh?
That was the best one I've heard for a while.
Who's my wife?
I'm not going to go there. If you'll please state your name and address.
She wondered why I was out so late. I apologize for that. I tried to turn it off.
That's not a problem.
Uh, my name is Lance Fish. I live in 2904 North by Blumbery Lane. I'm retired. I was in the land development business for about 40 years. I did a project with Greg and I did several in competition with him. So, uh, we didn't always get along, but I happen to agree heartily with his comments tonight. The people in this room that have homes out there, I think we've come down to the core problem. They're worried about property value. They're not worried about smell or anything else. They're worried about their property value. And what's going to happen is Mike's going to get a good business going and he's going to move it out of here. He's got to establish a reputation, establish a program with all the committees he's working with. And then he's going to go south. He's going to go out there in the desert somewhere where he can really big and makes money. But he's doing a good job of what he's doing. And he can't do it for much longer, 10 years. And by Gary signing that agreement, he ensured that the city of Meridian would get, be able to build their park on Lake Hazel, which they're currently building because they were about ready to be cut off by the city of Kuna in the annexation process. He also ensured that Meridian would have more property to grow for residential. Some of the last, quite frankly, because you're totally surrounded by other cities. So he actually did these people a favor. And I'm telling you, that property is not going down in value. They may have to wait a year or two. They won't be able to buy the new Cadillac and the yacht and all that stuff next year. But when it comes up and, and, and the order goes away and Mike quits doing it there, they're going to be worth a lot more. City of Meridian's going to have more residents and everybody's going to be better off. And I drive by that property several times a week and I'm not seeing the dust and the stuff. Columbia Road has a lot of trucks. Columbia Road's a collective road for the valley. It's bound to have a lot of trucks. How much construction is there going on in Meridian, Kuna Road? And where's all the gravel coming from? It's coming right down Columbia Road from the gravel pits by the airport. That's not caused by his project. There's farm trucks out there. There's been farm trucks out there a lot. You don't raise farm products to store it on the farm. You raise them to haul them off and sell them. That's been going on for years. So they've always been there. This project is not increasing their traffic flow. It's high this summer, but look at the problem. I'll quit for you. Anyway, I'm for it. I think we ought to leave him alone. I think we ought to let him do his stuff. I think he ought to be successful. I think he, he's improving in our environment by not leaving the stuff laying in the garbage dump for 50 years and decreasing the air value and everything else. So that's all I'll say.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess before you, we have one last person.
You can tell by the last name that I'm related to him. McGurdio's been around a long time.
Can you share your address?
7373 South Maple Grove Road.
Thank you.
Now, development will happen. I seen it. I farm all these places. I farm the Miller parcel, the nice green hayfield over here. I farm next to the canal. I go by Mike's facility every day. Locust Grove, Lake Hazel, Columbia. You know, really, I would like each and every one of you, he's not going to be here forever in that location. It's just not going to happen. The development is going to drive it out of there. I mean, that's the reality of it. Now, if you're going to live out in the country, and I've told this to a lot of people, by golly, you better put up with some of the country amenities to go along with it. And if you think it's going to devalue your property, I've got news for you. Your property values aren't going to go down unless there's a big economic crisis that makes it do that. And so everything I've heard tonight, you know what? I got to tell you, we've been around a long time, too, and there's a lot of dumpy places out there besides my nephew's Timber Creek. My dad set it best. Real estate is a precious commodity. You've got a young fella trying to get his feet under it. He knows he's not going to be there forever. He realizes that. You know, just like Lance said, the previous speaker, getting his feet underneath him, he's going to, he knows that. It's not rocket science. I haul a lot of chips out of there for my operation. I farm all around there. Just, I just want each one of you to honestly look at the big picture here. And I know you've heard a lot of, you know, complaints from the neighbors telling you the kid's trying. He's trying to make a go of that. And I would just ask you, council members, to really think about the big picture here. He's not going to be there forever. I'd answer, any questions that you've got?
Counsel, any questions? Thank you. Just after your 10 minutes, we'll take a break.
Thank you. I could have used that before my 10 minutes. Let's see what I can do. Mayor and counsel, my name is Josh Leonard of Bryan Webb Legal, represent several of the homeowners and neighbors of this facility. The address is 971 East Winding Creek in Eagle. I want to start really quickly. Councilmember Borton made an important point and pointed out an important problem. In this case, a development agreement is between the city and the landowner. There's not a means of enforcing against a user. The city would be beholden to that landowner to enforce against the user or the person that's operating on that property. Councilmember Borton, you asked if there was a fix to this problem, and there is. Require a CUP, a conditional use permit. That way, it's against the user, the applicant, and it's enforceable against the user applicant, not the landowner. It doesn't end up that the property gets de-zoned and de-annexed and kicked back to the county, which doesn't hurt this operation. Anyway, that's how I wanted to start. I also wanted to mention, and I apologize, I'm going to butcher your name, council member...
Mylum.
Mylum, thank you very much. The operation is allowed to exist on the property, and that is correct, but it's allowed to exist at the level it had as of the date of annexation. If we can pull up, I have a picture that shows that. While that's pulling up, I'll forge ahead a little bit. Meridian's development code generally prohibits industrial uses like the applicant's on residentially zoned property. The existing development protects his right to continue his use as it existed. The picture you see here is an aerial taken from Ada County GIS that shows the extent of that. If I could get the next slide. Could just click on it? Thank you. This is how it looks now, or this is how it looked in July. You've heard testimony from neighbors, great witnesses, all of them, because they live there, they drive by on those roads every day. They see this. You've heard testimony that it's grown 200 or 300% since 2016. That's actually not allowed under a development agreement. You can't do that, but there's been no enforcement to take him back down to where, to the size it should be. Some other pictures. You can see the construction waste here. Tires, he said he's removed those. The concrete that has been, the pile's been flattened down. The applicant's heavy use has already expanded beyond what was allowed in the existing DA, but now he's saying, trust me, I won't go beyond the next development agreement. I won't go any bigger if you'll just let me grow to this point. It didn't work before. Why would it work now? Why should we trust that now? And I apologize, Councilmember Cavanagh, for bringing the trust into question. It's not about him as a person at all. It's about the operation and about the neighbors who have been relying on him and on his word that this wouldn't grow, and they've watched it grow. And so there is distrust. It's just the way it is. The development code and the development director, the city's development director, both called this a heavy industrial operation. That's why the additional notice was sent out to everybody. As a heavy industrial use, it's expressly prohibited. If it weren't for the CUP option that's in code, he wouldn't have a way forward because it's flat prohibited. It's even with a CUP, he's not allowed to grow, except that he existed, and an existing use can expand by obtaining a CUP. The reason why a CUP is important is enforceability. It's also important because there are several conditions that are required by code that go along with a conditional use permit. For example, site screening, not a bunch of skinny trees along a road, a site screening fence that's, so you can't see the trash, the junk that's in there. The trees are what's called vegetative screening, and it's to screen the wall, not to screen the junk behind it. It's to beautify the wall. He would be required to maintain all the grounds in an orderly manner. And a key one is that he'd be required to locate all mechanical equipment and operations, power-driven processing equipment, operations, shipping and delivery areas, and outdoor activity at least 300 feet from any residentially zoned area. Because this is a residentially zoned area, that means the outline of this parcel. That's a 300-foot setback from all of his property lines. He doesn't do that now. That's what the neighbors are asking for. They're asking for you to comply with Meridian City Development Code and make him comply with Meridian City Development Code. Another thing he'd be required to do is to pave all driveways to mitigate dust. Instead of going out and making mud, adding water to dirt, we're asking that he pave it, as is required in Meridian City Code. He'd be required to store no unsorted material. These are quotes out of Meridian City's Development Code. He'd be required to store no unsorted material outside. You'd have to build shelters for it, like the transfer station that was mentioned. Transfer station is an indoor facility. Stuff comes in, and then it's transferred out. It doesn't sit there and rot. That's what this facility does. That's its specialty. That's what compost is. It's rotting. It's developing into nutrients. That's just the fact of it. He would also be required to identify how the proposed heavy industrial use will address noise impacts and other emissions before the city signs the DA, not after it, not when he changes up and goes and gets a Tier Two. He would be required today. He would be required to obtain written statements from all federal, state, and local jurisdictions that not just that it complies, that the use complies, or that he's subject to their jurisdiction, but that the subject property, the proposed heavy industrial use, the site, the facilities, the structures, and the equipment involved all meet every applicable standard. And he would be required to mitigate all noise, odors, vibrations, blowing debris, and other materials. There is no authority in the Local Design Use Planning Act or in the Meridian City Development Code to ignore these requirements. It's mandatory, and it's mandatory that he get a CUP. Councilmember Palmer, to your point earlier, talking of, I think we were talking about the, the children's museum was up, and you mentioned fiscal responsibility. I'd encourage you to read that section in the memo that I provided. I apologize, it was late this afternoon. Suffice it to say, this application, if approved, could be a money pit for the city of Meridian as the city defends against the Lupa judicial review that my clients have directed me to file. I don't want to see that happen. I don't want to, I don't want to waste money on lawyers that could be spent elsewhere. Is everybody, before I go on, is everybody clear about the Right to Farm Act and the fact that it doesn't apply? I don't want to waste time on it if there's any questions. Not only does it matter whether it's industrial or agricultural, the Right to Farm Act is designed so that when the residential area grows and a farm stays put, the residential area doesn't drive out the farm. The opposite is happening here. The residential area is staying put, and the trash pile is growing. The application came from them, so the Right to Farm Act just doesn't apply, even if this was an agricultural use. I want to take a moment and compare applications. I want to talk a little bit about Boise City's 20 Mile South Farm. I want to point out the location on the map. It's about 10.5 miles out, way past, way past this location. I want to point out Boise City's composting facility. That's a one-mile radius drawn around it, the red circle being the composting facility. See what's there? It's all agricultural. It's all farm. They use this compost there. This is the one-mile radius of the applicant's site. I'm going to go a step further. Here are depicted are all of the houses within one mile of the Boise City site? There are zero. These are all of the residences and houses located within one mile of the applicant's site. There are over 65. Different site. The Boise site, I also want to talk about applications. Boise's application included so many details, honestly, it was tough to get through. It included about 45 different studies and technical papers that were not included in this one, and yet it's 10.5 miles out in the country. It's not in the middle of a residentially zoned area. Somebody said we need to reset. Councilmember Cavanagh, I believe that was you. We need to level set, excuse me, and to get some context. I'm going to bring some clarity to what the standard is here. The applicant doesn't have any right to expand. His rights are protected by the development agreement. The only, the only rights that exist in this situation are the residents. They have a vested property right and a vested interest in what happens out there. The applicant's asking you to give him more than he deserves and to encroach upon their property right to do it. And that's fine. And the reason why a CUP is important is because it requires mitigation from him. And if he can put forward enough mitigation that the resulting negative effects are insignificant, great. All you've heard today is testimony that the resulting effects are not insignificant. I'm going to break down testimony really quickly in the last 20 seconds or so. I heard two types of testimony. I heard A, the applicant is a good guy, good businessman, and I heard the word sustainability. That's one type of testimony. The second one was the negative effects of the applicant's proposed heavy industrial use, even considering the minimal mitigation effort of the applicant, will be terrible. It will negatively affect the quiet enjoyment, the property values, and the character of the neighborhood. All will be significantly negatively affected. To leave you, I want to say one last thing. This isn't a situation of not in my backyard. The benefit of having property zoned residential is that it's not in any backyard. Nobody should have to deal with this. This isn't a situation where these neighbors are saying, don't affect us. They're saying, don't affect residences. Don't put this in a backyard, let alone 65-plus of them. Ask you to deny this application.
Okay, we will take a 10-minute break, so we'll reconvene at 10:20. Okay, we will take a 10-minute break, so we'll reconvene at 10:20. Okay, I'll go ahead and reconvene this meeting. Okay, just wanted to make one last call. Is there any further testimony? Okay, we'll ask for the applicant to give us their wrap-up remarks and respond to some of the items that were brought up during the testimony, and then we'll entertain questions from our council.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, members of council. First off, I want to-
Just restate your name and address.
Sorry. Mike McGurdio, 7695 South Lucas Grove, Meridian, Idaho, 83642, managing member of Timber Creek Recycling. So first off, I want to start off by saying, if this composting facility were to start tomorrow, we would only be composting the current leaves that are on the site, which is about 20,000 to 25,000 yards. The expansion we talked about with some of the other stuff is capped by the truckloads. One of the other things, all the industrial guys that are in those industrial parks in Ada County, every one of those guys have called me this year for relief for their piles. Every one of them. And I have not violated the DA. I disagree full-heartedly with the amount of material that has come in over the past since 2015 or whenever the development agreement was agreed upon. You can go to Ada County, that's where I got those numbers from. I had her email me exactly every single yard and leaf that came in that, over the last, since I started the contract. Those were, those numbers were pulled. Those were not pulled out of thin air. Those are their numbers, not mine. The plan, as far as food waste goes, the food waste that would be coming in if approved would have the, two things that would have to happen is, it would have to have a city such as yourself come in and say, "Yes, we want to be a part of this composting operation." A part of that percentage of material that comes in, that food waste, is only 10%. It is also, the material that comes in is associated with carbon, which ties up the odors and is which required to be ground up very quickly. DEQ specifies exactly the dates and times on that. The feedlot odor smells that my feedlot does is extremely minimal compared to other feedlots in the area because of the carbon content we put with the manures. I challenge you to drive by any feedlot in the valley, compare it to mine, and I guarantee it'll be a better smelling feedlot than anyone out there. And it's due to my management with our carbon. We will be not composting dead animals. That is absurd. Compost piles will be the similar size to Boise City's. I mean, when you grind it, winrow it, you have to have a winrow turner designed to do it to that, that size. We will be doing, matching exactly what they're doing. My goal is to continue a healthy relationship with my neighbors. I, I don't think there's any one of those neighbors that in the past, since that site's been there, since I've been grinding there, that I have ever turned away a neighbor and said, "Let's not have a cup of coffee or talk." I had an individual come into me after the meeting. I was excited, thought we were going to meet in the middle somewhere. All they told me, we sat down, we had that cup of coffee, and they said, "Sorry, you just seem like a really nice guy, but can you pack up and move?" And I said, "You don't have any room to kind of work with me on?" And they're like, "No, we just think it's the wrong spot." So that kind of attempt failed, but I will still extend that offer for them to come out and do that. The transfer station wood is outside, it is not inside. Again, the 200 to 300% is bogus. I'd say check the records of Ada County. Let's see, Boise City's site that they compost on is trucked out there, composted, and hauled back. How I know this is I have an agreement with Republic Services to do some of their hauling back into town. So I do know their carbon footprint would not be the same as this. Justin, go ahead.
Justin Cranny, Holly Troxell, 877 Main Street, Boise, Idaho. Just a couple of quick comments I wanted to address today. If we go back to the original development agreement, the one that's currently in effect, I'd like to read some language to you. Section 4 of the agreement states, "The right to use and develop the property shall be in accordance with the terms and conditions of this agreement. The following uses are specifically allowed." Section 4.6, "Any use constituting an agricultural operation as defined in Idaho Code 22405-2." That's the Right to Farm Act. If we go to that act, so, well, it may not be, contrary to the assertion that it's not applicable, it is, the definition applies. What is an agricultural operation? Plant byproducts, plant waste, plant compost, keeping livestock, transporting agricultural products, processing and packaging agricultural products. Sounds like what we're doing. That's an agricultural operation and permitted under this original DA. That's what we're asking. Furthermore, you can operate Timber Creek on the property as is currently conducted or may be conducted in the future. We have some rights here. While they may be ringing the drum, saying you have to comply with R4, 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 there's some existing rights that we have under this development agreement that is effective and valid. We're really not seeking to do much more than we're already entitled to do. Ag definition, again, been hammered again. What's ag? What's industrial, et cetera, et cetera? Right to Farm Act defines an ag use as what I just said, you know? Doing plant waste and plant compost. The case that was cited and attached to the memo, that was a jurisdictional fight. That wasn't defining what is ag and what's industrial. That was who has jurisdiction, DEQ or Department of Ag? That's not really defining who is able to, who defines what industrial use is. It's who has the right to govern it. And Timber Creek has zero objection to whoever has the right to govern gets to govern over this, this, their, their operation. Claim to be detrimental, we've heard that incessantly today. Surprisingly, until this amendment came up, there had never been a complaint. We asked for public records requests from City Meridian and from DEQ, saying, "Who's complained?" Like, we've never received any as Timber Creek. Who's complained? I filed today, or with the city clerk, those records that were received, about three, all were found baseless. One point I did want to bring up, the 16-foot wall was raised. There's a new 16-foot wall on this property. It's a pile of haystacks. Timber Creek was trying to say, "What else can we do to mitigate the visual and noise impact? Let's put up some hay. We've recognized that when we're driving on that lot, you go behind the piles of the ground-up mulch, the sound drops to negligible. Hey, if we put some, some hay up, it'll block the site, so hopefully they can't say it looks like it's an eyesore, and hey, we'll block a lot of the sound." Well, now they're complaining about the wall. No matter what we do, we're getting hammered. Regulation, again. We're opening the door to additional regulation and restrictions on what can happen. Under the old original development agreement, like I said, two pages of documents, there are two pages of language about what Timber Creek can do. It's mainly what they can do. There's no real restrictions. We're offering to say, "Hey, we'll take the additional oversight. We'll take the additional restrictions on what we can and cannot do." We're trying. We're trying to address these issues. The sideout in Boise, there's a stack of requirements we have to go through. You have to do all these things. They take biosolids from waste facilities. Not doing that. That adds additional level of, of regulation, I'm sure. We're not doing that. The amendment versus the CUP. We were told to do an amendment. We came to the city, said the amendment's the proper process. We discussed this at the last hearing. What do we do? Do we go with rezone? Do we go with continued amendment? It was decided to keep pursuing the amendment. Because into the day, if we do a CUP, we have notice, we have a neighborhood meeting, we have to jump through certain hoops to make sure that we mitigate any impact. Isn't that what we're doing? We've had neighborhood meetings, we've talked to the neighbors, we're trying to mitigate the impact. End of the day, CUP amendment to the development agreement, kind of at the same place. So, okay, do we have to jump through additional hoop to get to the same place? I think not when we're told to do, do this amendment and we try and put as many protections as places we can. Additional complaints about it being loose still. It's a business operation. We're trying to maintain a level of flexibility. We've added all those levels of protection. We're trying to make sure that this isn't a loose goose, that it doesn't expand the 200 to 300% that's represented, which hasn't occurred. But we need to make sure there's some flexibility in the operation. Lastly, you know, repeatedly stated, "This is a grandfathered use. This is a grandfathered use. You can't expand it." Well, to the contrary, Idaho law does say grandfathered use can expand to a degree, natural growth. Now, you can't quadruple in size? Yeah, that's understood. Idaho case law, I can provide the citations if you like, does allow for expansion of a grandfathered use. Furthermore, your own code provides that if you want to expand additional area even, not just if you have a grandfathered use, "Hey, we want to expand an additional property." That's doable. Now, you have to jump through the right hoops, but it is doable. So we're here trying to jump through the right hoops, trying to get the issues and the complaints and the potential impacts mitigated. We've set them out, we've described them. If there's further revisions the city council would like to see, we're happy to take into consideration. But right now, after the last meeting, you said, "No more moving targets." We've solidified our position. We've given you the mini-development agreement. We've given you a solid target.
Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Thank you again, Justin and Mike. One quick question for me. Would you guys be willing to move the sunset clause from, you know, at a, at a, at a smaller number than 10 years?
Mayor, Tam, excuse me, Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Trent Byrd. Wow, I'm on a roll today.
It's a late night, don't worry.
It is a late night. I apologize, I apologize to both of you. Really sorry. We set the window to 2030 for one specific reason. With this site, should Timber Creek want to enter into a contract to start bringing these materials on to achieve Tier 2 composting and bring these recyclable materials in and compost them, requires a 10-year contract typically. It wasn't a willy-nilly decision like, "Let's see, let's, you know, roll the dice." It was a couple of years to get, jump through the hoops with DEQ and the Central Health Department, get the operation plan in line, find a contract, get going. That will give us the 10-year window. That's why we did it, if you're open to. I think that's the basis for the 2030.
Are you thinking like, I mean, half probably wouldn't be doable. It, it has, it has to do with the equipment have to be purchased, the site planning. When you, when you build a site, you go through a process with DEQ that you basically have to have the whole site engineered. It's just a very costly deal. But it's one of those deals to where, to me, if development comes, it offsets those costs. So it's not, to me, it's like, the 10-year deal is kind of floating for me, it's not a locked-in deal. If I got a developer standing there with a contract in his hands saying, "Hey, I'm willing to make you an offer on this. Are you willing to leave?" I'm out the door. So I, I don't have to, you know, lock into that 10-year deal.
Other questions?
Member?
Mr. Palmer.
One thing that I hadn't caught when I read through the strikeout underline was the, the words about the weather station. Somebody brought it up. You tell me what the weather station is and what your use for it would be.
So the weather station is a tool that we use for taking care of an odor complaint or monitoring where an odor complaint could be coming from. So when DEQ calls up and says, "Hey, we got a complaint," so we, we have an accurate daily monitor of those, those wind directions. So basically, if the, the person is over here, wind direction is directly- So basically, if the person is over here, wind direction is directly here, you know, we can go over here to this point and draw a line to see exactly where that odor was coming from, as well as monitor different things as far as, you know, rain and that compost pile. To manage it properly, you have the right moisture content, heat, when there's your feedstocks, which are your different carbons, your nitrogens or your greens and browns, there's a whole, it all meshes in with that plan with DEQ.
If you can give it to the clerk.
So that right there is a temperature probe. So we probe the piles. It's about anywhere from a four to six-foot probe. It goes into the pile and it monitors what that temperature is at that location. And those are, that's what we are currently using on our site for our wood piles, because when you ground and add water, it's a delicate balance between dust and a fire hazard with the wood. So we use those tools very often.
I think the clerk is pulling that up. Does that make it clearer?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I'm curious what other materials Becky has to share with us. No. Yeah, it was something that somebody had brought up and I was curious what exactly that was.
Thank you. Mr. Borton.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. As a follow-up to, I think it was Councilman Burnt's question on the termination, there's been remarks about, you know, a temporary use, and you've made gestures now that may certainly be your intent, but the language is written, doesn't have any sunset clause at all. There's conditions on the recycling that if those were to occur, which may never occur, then that use would stop. And for the composting, it really isn't a termination clause as written. So if the intent is to have some date certain by which all uses shall cease, that's different. I just wanted to be clear, if that's what you're saying, that would be different than what it says.
We wanted to leave it open for, we don't know what this economical cycle is going to do. So to say deadline it at ten years, eight years, or twelve years, I don't want to put myself in a box to where, you know, it's not a part of my long-term plan, right? So we're trying to put the literature in there as such, not to be so open, as you say, but as trying to word it to where it does have a sunset clause without a binding way of either side. In a way to where it's, you know, more towards the encroachment of development.
So, Madam Mayor. I think I get it. It sounds like it's like being sort of pregnant, which you can't be. Right? I mean, it's something sunset or they don't, and that's what I struggle with. If, in fact, it's, we're talking about termination, and it just come up because there's so many comments about, you know, it's a temporary use and there's going to be a change. And begs the question, if these mitigation efforts are sufficient, well, then why not be a permanent use? And why wouldn't it be appropriate to be there for fifty years or sixty years? It seems as though the focus is on the temporary nature because we recognize that these incompatibilities we may suffer with for a short period of time, maybe the benefits outweigh the costs. And if there's a true sunset clause, then we can rest assured long-term, the region successfully develops. But as written, it doesn't say that, and that's the reason for the question.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, you're correct. It was a misnomer to say it's a sunset. These are conditions that will cause the termination of the development agreement and the right to conduct the recycling activities. It's not a hard date.
I agree.
Now, the question is, there's two options you gave us. No hard date, or no date at all, let's do it permanently, which I don't think anyone here really is interested in, especially behind me. Or we say we set one that's so short that it makes it that it's not feasible. So the question would be, you know, what's the hard date going to be? We couldn't come up with that again, is, you know, what's the economical cycle? If there's a huge downturn again, well, there's going to be no development, so let's keep doing the use. If there's not one, and the growth comes quicker than expected, and he gets that contract in hand in five years, he's gone. So it left its subject more to, kind of always representative lessons, the organic growth of the City of Meridian and the development. It's keyed to that. So if it grows faster, great, we're out sooner. If it grows slower, well, then we're there a little bit longer.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Woke myself up. So remind me, something that I think you said probably in the opening about the sunset clause, and it has to do with, I guess, to call him, because of Borton, the difference is if a hundred acres with one house on it as opposed to a hundred acres with four hundred houses on it, or whatever, so that, but isn't a certain amount of feet, as soon as one house is built within so many feet, you're done, right?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum. The one condition you're talking about is when there is a C of O granted, I'm sorry, conditional occupancy, granted within a thousand feet of the grinder. Now, again, to keep with the organic growth instead of a, "Hey, I've got ten acres, let's do a quick subdivision of five and put up a little shack and get a C of O and they're out." This was to say when the natural growth occurs, so we added some requirements to make it sure that's that organic growth and not just this, "I can trigger this now."
Madam Mayor, follow up. So you just moved the grinder?
To, Michael, let me answer this.
The window of where that would be would be too small to operate the size of piles that you're talking about. It would be impossible to continue the amount of volume that comes in, which is simply moving the grinder.
So in essence, as soon as growth comes out and a house, a CUP is issued within a thousand feet, you're done. You're not going to just move the grinder somewhere else and continue.
Madam Mayor, I think, given this position, if it would make the council more comfortable, and again, not to move the target, we could add language saying, "As soon as it's done, you know, the grinder cannot be moved to an alternate location on the property." Would that appease some concerns?
Sure, way out there.
Okay, I'm sorry. Any other questions? Verification.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I hope we'll keep the public hearing open, maybe some lessons learned. Before we maybe jump into some deliberation, I've got some questions for legal. There was a question raised earlier from a member of the public inquiring to the council's relationship with the applicant. And I appreciate the question being asked because I think it only improves transparency and goes back to my earlier comment about trust. And so the question was, "Who on this council has a relationship with the applicant, with Mr. McGurdio?" And so I'll be the first to say that I know Mike. I met Mike and his wife when I was campaigning last year. We bonded over our enjoyment of farming. I grew up on a farm. And I would be so proud to call him a friend, and I don't know if he would call me one, but I bet he would. I also think it's important to know, even though it's a public record and you can go look and see where all my donations came, Mr. McGurdio donated to me. So I think it's important that you know that. That said, I've been on the city council for five years. I have voted in favor of applicants who have donated to me. I have voted against applicants who have donated to me. I have voted in favor when the public who have donated and knocked doors and have been my next-door neighbor have come and testified. I voted against applicants where neighbors who have knocked doors and donated to my campaign have come out and spoken favor. One of the things that I have learned being on the city council is that every decision we make, we're going to make somebody mad. And with that comes a little bit of freedom because you are able to make what you believe is the best decision. So I can't remember who it was, but I appreciate you asking the question, and I think it's important for transparency that I share that with you as we continue to deliberate as council. I don't want the public to have a thought or a fear that because I have a personal relationship with somebody that that impacts my decision. You can go back and look at my record, and you can see that I've made good friends, good neighbors, happy. I've made good friends, good neighbors angry at me. It just, it comes with being part of a citizen-led city council that inevitably somebody who you know you have a relationship is going to be before you. So I just thought it was important to put that on the record, ma'am. Okay, Madam Mayor. A question for, sorry, Mr. Nary.
I didn't know that was a question.
Nope.
I didn't hear a question.
Madam Mayor, I do have a question though for Mr. Nary. In the testimony, there was a question raised about the legality of this application and that we, this should just come through as a CUP, and I was hoping you could respond and give council some clarification on that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Kavner. Lawyers tend to disagree on occasion and may have a different perspective of the way the code reads. We have never required a development agreement to go through the CUP process to expand or to change, even if the change could have required a CUP in another context. So the process we follow today is the same process we followed as long as I've been associated both with planning and zoning or the city council issues. So every condition that was requested by Mr. Leonard could be incorporated into a development agreement. Mr. Leonard raised the concern that the only provision in the code regarding development agreements is de-annexation. What the code says is, when you agree to a development agreement, you consent in that process to being de-annexed if you violate the condition. It doesn't say that is the only remedy that you have. That is generally the remedy we use, but it's not the only one. So if the council decides in favor of this application and wants more specific requirements placed into the development agreement, you can direct that. Those weren't provided to you because the staff recommendation was denial. So everything that's been requested could be done in the development agreement. The CUP process doesn't change anything, and it's my reading of this Idaho code and our UDC that it is not required to do that. It wouldn't change the outcome of the process because you'd still have notice, you still have neighborhood meetings, you still have a public hearing, and you still have conditions of approval. So the requirements of the CUP are no different than the DA can be. It's, again, it's a contractual relationship between the city and the applicant. The applicant can be directed through the property owner and the signers of the agreement, which can be the operator. So all of those things can be incorporated into DA. We haven't done that, again, because the request is a denial. Hope that answers your question.
Any other questions from council? Or staff, the applicant, or any of those that provided testimony? Or I guess I'd ask council if you want to take any additional testimony.
I'm in favor of it. It's important. Yeah.
Field, please state your name.
Lloyd Gibbons, eighty-three fifty South Jardine Lane. One really quick thing that goes directly to your question, our lawyer, or the lawyer touched on it briefly. The only people who own land zoned within the city, within the thousand feet, are the applicants. So they have the golden ticket to keep it from not developing until they decide it to. Everybody else who might develop is either in the county still, you know, hasn't been annexed, so it's a quilt around there. They're the ones in control of that, so you should know that. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I guess that just brings up a question for clarification, and is that only if there's growth within a thousand feet in Meridian city limits? Or is that, does it state a thousand feet in any direction?
Mr. Nary.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so the development agreement, Councilmember Mylum, is only directed to growth within the city. We have never, in my time, ever required or made conditions based on other entities or other jurisdictions' approvals, predominantly because the city has no say in those approvals. Many times we don't get notice of those approvals. We may not even know they have approved a residence within that thousand-foot zone that's in the county until they're moving dirt. So we've never required that in any development agreement that I've done since I've been here.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Does the applicant get the last word?
The applicant will get the last word. I thought maybe you should finish your discussion in case the applicant needs to respond further.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
So appreciate the input and comments on every side. I think it's of great value in this process. Taking a lot of notes, walking through the details of the development agreement, it's hard not to get lost in the details and the minutia of every shall versus may, but it's really the only way to make anything like this successful. Everything hinges on shals and mays, especially if there's not set termination dates. And amongst the list of mitigation issues that were discussed to try and address what otherwise would be unacceptable conditions, we discussed requirements of inspections, hours of operations, manner of composting, termination clauses, truck counts, smell mitigation, sound mitigation, site mitigation, landscaping, dust mitigation, fire mitigation, DEQ compliance, all of which seem to try to address what otherwise is an unacceptable circumstance for this area. The takeaway is, these exceptions seem to be the tail wagging the dog a bit for this particular use for me. In light of the fact there's not a hard end date for this type of use of this location, that is of interest because that doesn't exist today, and if that's some of the trade-off that would occur, it doesn't sound, that's not in the development agreement today. It's not what's proposed, and it doesn't sound like it's possible to make a hard deadline, at least from what I've heard so far. So I think the existing use is grandfathered, which is not to be expanded. I think that's what's most appropriate, so I'm not in favor of amending the DA as presented for those reasons and the fact that this very well may continue in perpetuity. You just don't know.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I guess where I have a little bit of a hard time with that is I understand we don't want it in perpetuity, but growth is going to come out that way. Up Locust Grove, going south, it's going to come. And that's where the tenures came from. That was the estimation of how long it would take, based on previous, the previous mile. So I don't, I'm not, that doesn't bother me so much because of, because we know the growth is going to come, unless there's a huge, the only way it could function longer is if the market crashes again and the building stops and, you know, and then there might not be an industry for what he's doing anyway, so it still may stop. I got, the biggest issue that I have with this, and I listened to all of your testimony, I've read all of your letters, and I truly care, and I don't want you living in a dump. However, I have been out by this place, and I was pretty impressed with the way that it was kept up. The property would not have been annexed had we not asked the McGurdios to annex for the betterment of the city. And I think that if they were in the county and they weren't, hadn't annexed into the city, they wouldn't be, there are not as big of restrictions within the county. This may not be such an issue. They probably could have had this expansion done and approved a long time ago. But they're having a hard time because they did a solid for the City of Meridian. And that is what the hardest part for me is. And I think that they will do better. better. Unfortunately, there are a small number of homes that will, that may possibly be negative effect, negatively affected, but they will do more betterment for the community as a whole than the damage that they would, that they could possibly cause.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Question for Councilmember Mylum, open a question. Can you just, for the sake of the record, disclose when you were out at that facility and when that timing occurred?
I had a tour of the facility, I don't know when it was, about a year ago, maybe. I am the liaison to the Solid Waste Advisory Commission and went out to just look at the whole operations of the facility to see if the, they're trying to decide if the Solid Waste Advisory Commission should start contemplating composting for home garden waste because we have had a lot of, community members, Meridian citizens, ask for that service. So that was the purpose of the tour that I went on. It was really just drove around and looked at how things were set up, and I didn't notice any, the cattle to me has a lot more smell than the composting. And we're here discussing that, so. But that, to me, if I was a neighbor, that would be what was bothering me. Now, the composting was fine. I was really impressed with the quality of the setup and the organization of everything. I was very impressed.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Low Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I tend to agree with Ms. Mylum and what the family has done. Probably the biggest thing right now that seems like we can serve everyone is the fact that if they're allowed to go to the next tier, then there's so many more sideboards on it because it seems like none of the issues are going to really be resolved without more odor control and more things that will come into play if they're actually larger than, rather than continuing on with the exact same thing that they've been doing, which is grandfathered in. So I'm, I mean, this is a tough one, but that keeps coming back to my mind, that there's more sideboards and more regulations if they go the next step. And people keep talking about odors and things that will be under control of even, I don't remember which we were told, health and welfare, or something that's really surprised me.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I do agree. That is a good point with regards to the benefits that come that don't otherwise exist with its current condition. The tipping point for me is a date certain on termination of use. And if there's a mechanism and there's gestures that maybe there's going to be comments to that effect, but a date certain where the recycling and the composting all ends, I think that's what makes this successful long-term.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Just some food for thought around the date certain, because like Councilmember Borton, I've wrestled with that particular piece. And where I think I've come down, again, and I still don't quite know where I'm going to be on this, but on the piece related to the date, the reason why I support development action as opposed to date action is none of us have a crystal ball. None of us knew in 2008 that we'd be as booming as we are now. Just likewise, in 2004, nobody knew what Meridian was going to be like in 2008. If we as a body support and approve this use, well, then I think it's development that should end it, not a specific date. Because if development moves faster, well, then Mr. Magurdio, should we approve this, is going to need to move someplace else. Likewise, if the economy falls out and development in that part of town slows or stops, he can continue to operate as council would permit. So I would rather see growth be the driver to have Mr. Magurdio relocate than a specific date on a calendar for me personally.
Mr. Neri, I think a couple of statements have come up that if this property were in the county, it would be allowed to expand. What is the process for that? And when it's in an area of impact, what consideration do they give? Can you answer that?
Probably only a part, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So if this was, if this was not annexed property into the city, there was earlier statements that it was not an allowed use in the county. I don't know that. I mean, what they were doing was already being done in the county. Whether this particular type of approval could be gained in the county, I don't know. Planning knows either whether or not that would be allowed if this wasn't in the city. So they certainly could apply. I just don't know what the county standards are in regards to a composting facility. Obviously, they approved them because the Boise City facility we've talked about is in the county, but it is in a different location. So I don't know what county standards would apply and whether the composting would be allowed in the different, in this if it wasn't in the city. I don't know if Sonya has any idea either. I don't know. I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, to answer, I think, the second part of your question, when activity occurs within our area of impact, but it's in the county, both in our area of impact, the county does notify the city of a pending application and does allow the city to provide comment on that application. So if that were to occur, we'd have the opportunity to provide comment.
I guess I go back to Councilman Borton's, you can't be half-pregnant. And we are going through a comprehensive plan update, and, you know, either this is industrial or it's residential. It's, and you maintain what the non-conforming use was rather than expand it. I do think that we need a solution to food waste and recycle waste and to have a sustainability model, not just at the landfill, but that another one on the south side. Does it belong in the middle of the city? I don't think so. This, before we annexed it, it was identified on our comprehensive plan as low-density. So, you know, the R4 designation is a little bit higher use, and the low-density at that time was considered more two to the acre to transition from the CUNA area and to have some kind of a transition zone. If it should be considered industrial, you know, I just feel like we want our cake and we want to eat it too, and we want this higher density or higher impact use of industrial until we get a good price to redevelop as residential. And I guess that's what I struggle with, is that one property, and you heard that in testimony, is going to dictate all the uses around it and limit that until they get a better, a better offer. So I think that the question in front of the council is, do you want this as industrial, or do you want it as, and there's a process for that, or do you want it as residential, which is already contemplated in both the annexation and the long-term comprehensive plan. So it will impact the neighbors. To think that it won't, but I do think Ms. Low Roberts did raise a good point that Ms. Mylum also brought up is with the regulation through DEQ and Central District Health, the expanded use is going to have greater regulation than the current use. And that just made it clear as mud.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Kind of chomping at the bit to hear what, there was a wave and a gesture of what this comment might be to either thumb up or thumb down some concepts with termination clauses. Is that fair to?
That's why the, that's why this public hearing is still.
Maybe more comment amongst the council, but.
And they still haven't had their last word, so. No, they didn't.
I don't know if, Mike Magurdio, Timber Creek Recycling Manager, Timber Creek Recycling, sorry it's late. I don't know if you could pull this back up. This is the neighborhood impact? Yes. Could you pull that back up? To your point, oh, Madam Mayor, Commissioner Borton, to your point, you wanted some more, you know, what you're saying is basically we have all the tools in our toolbox to keep going and know, you know, such ways for others to really dictate, you know, what we're doing. We're willing to take the properties from a thousand feet. If it hits the processing area, not the grinder, the compost is done. So I think that's a little safer for the neighbors, and it's something we think is close to what we were thinking of doing anyway is fair. So if he pulls that up, maybe not. If you see right in the center where it's outlined, it says the processing area, that whole outline right there. Basically, to the north, if the city, like, you know, he stated of the, instead of just being the grinder, just have it be in the processing area. So.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
To clarify that, like, do you own the property a thousand feet? Okay, so it's not in your hands, like, as has been?
No, it is not. No, we do not, we farm it, but we do not own it. Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
So I think that the big gorilla in the room right now is, you know, what dictates this decision going forward? Is it growth? Do we wait for growth to, to put Timber Creek in a position where they move? Or do we, or do we go by a contract that's closed and very defined, that lays out, you know, whether, I guess in this case it's a development agreement. And so with those, with those two options in mind, my gut tells me, and I lean more toward the development agreement. If this were a similar situation, similar project inside, inside our city limits, you know, down the street or whatever, somewhere closer to where development currently is, I feel like we would have a different point of view. I feel like, you know, maybe it wouldn't be about growth. Maybe it would be more about, you know, what is stated specifically in the development agreement. And so in my, in my opinion, I favor a strong sunset clause somewhere sooner than later. And hence my question that I asked earlier, Mike, you know, do you favor something, you know, three years, five years? It gives you an opportunity to go out and try to find another location. And I know that's not something you, that you, that you stated that's not something you're interested in doing for various reasons, but, you know, not having something, having total, almost, I guess, is a bit of control over that area without having an exact endpoint makes me nervous. It makes me nervous as, as an elected official who, you know, makes decisions based upon the betterment of the community. And so I don't like open-ended anything, period. I don't, I don't, I don't want, I don't like, you know, hypothetical situations being discussed based upon, is growth going to dictate this decision in two years, five years, seven years, 10 years? That, to me, just is a recipe for disaster. And so I'm not saying I'm for or against. I, you know, it's getting late and, but that, I think my sentiments fall more in line with Councilman Borton right now. So.
Madam Mayor, I don't see why we couldn't do both. Do it with the distance, knowing that it's probably going to happen within 10 years. But put a hard number at like 24 or whatever, number 2040, which gives him that extra 10-year, if, listen, no, or a thousand feet, just like it says now, knowing that that will probably happen with less than 10 years unless growth stops. So it only allows that, but it gives a hard number. It kind of takes care of both issues.
Okay.
We're still going back, Madam Mayor, right now, the contract states with, it said if a house gets a permit, we're, God, it's getting late, CFO, within a thousand feet of this whole area now, he's just expanded it, a thousand feet of that whole area, they're done. So that still stays. I'm not taking that out. Or the latter, if that never happens, that means growth completely stops, which I think everybody in this room knows is not going to happen. But it just gives a hard number. Because there are some people that feel.
We not have this two-way dialogue, so.
Oh, yes, sorry. The only reason to put it in there is to not leave it open, because the way it's written right now is open, and it could be just renegotiated after 10 years. It could be renegotiated for another 10 years, and another 10 years, and another 10 years. This puts a hard end date on it if the other one had not been met. So if the thousand feet had not been met, then it goes out that far. But that's not going to happen. It's just to close up the paperwork. I don't.
No, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
So thank everyone, appreciate your patience. Here's one of the challenges, because we are really, really in the weeds on this project, and we can go back and forth. So it's not trying to be rude, but what happens procedurally, all the nerdy stuff, right, if we open up for more additional comment, it never ends, right? And we understand, and it's not, it's not that we don't want to hear or receive additional input. You made your points very well-received, but we will, in fairness to everybody up here and down there, we'd be here all night. And we've made that mistake in other hearings with good intentions, and it goes back and forth and the applicant, and pretty soon, nobody's happy. So we'll be kind of equally rude to everybody by, hopefully you understand and appreciate, that's what we mean when we're trying to move this along and quiet the comment from the crowds. So I don't mean to be disrespectful, but helpful understanding.
I guess, council, what is baffling is we plan cities and the county plans for these agricultural uses. This is annexed in our city. It's in our area of impact, and if this application were in front of the county at this point, we'd be very concerned that there was consideration being given for this kind of a industrial use in our area of impact. And this is unusual. It's highly unusual that. It's highly unusual that we have this situation. But you look at it in any other scenario, I can't see that the city council would be considering it, which is why you have the recommendation from our city staff for denial. It's not contemplated in our comprehensive plan. It's really hard to enforce, even putting a sunset. It's hard to enforce that it gets expanded. It's an anomaly that we haven't seen before, and that's why we're going to be clunky in our discussions. But if it were, this is a needed amenity for Ada County, and it's certainly something that's needed for our citizens. And we do respect the McGurdios and that, but we're looking at land use, and we're being asked to consider something that is not, has not been considered in any of our planning processes. And we're being asked to consider it for temporary, and what temporary means is not defined either. So I think we're going down a real dangerous path in what we're considering at this point when you look at what we as city planners are supposed to be doing. If we want industrial use in this area, then we're updating our comprehensive plan, and this is the time to consider that as a permanent use in that area, if this is something that we really should contemplate.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I don't feel that I need any additional information. I move that we close the public hearing on item 9G.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we approve H. 2018-0042, the modification of the development agreement with the following amendments. Under 6.8.2, where it states that within 1,000 feet of the grinding machine located on the recycling property, to be changed, there's two points in there where it mentions it, to be changed to within 1,000 feet of the processing area, and for Mr. Neri to put the appropriate language to that effect, approved otherwise.
That's it?
Point six.
Point 8.2.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Councilman Palmer, are you sure you don't want to throw any 15 years in there as a secondary hard close date or anything hard?
Madam Mayor.
Use some other councilman.
Mr. Palmer.
While I'd love to, just to make people feel better, again, as Councilman Kavner pointed out, nobody has a crystal ball. I would bet that this doesn't last that long, but should the economy tank and we get back into a situation where there's no development, still a few miles north, no new development, then the use should be allowed to be continued.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
That's what Palmer, it's actually Councilman Burton that is, that is his hard thing, so I'm good with it the way it is, but, because I think that it's going, the growth is going to happen in probably less than 10 years. It could happen in six years. The way that growth is happening in Marini, it's probably going to be, it'd be like next tomorrow, it'll seem like tomorrow.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
We speak of growth, and there is that consideration, but there's a lot of residents already near and around it that we've heard from and are subjected to what could come from the expansion. So even without growth, there's lots of individuals who are impacted should it expand. I'm not supportive of the motion for a couple of reasons, just process-wise, again, a contract like this is everything, and every shall and may. If anything went forward, even if the public hearings closes, it would be tabled with direction, the legal staff, to try and come up with language which articulated some of the concerns that council raised, but extremely dangerous to approve it, even with good intentions here. I think taking time, should something go forward, would be more appropriate, and then let us read the language in every shall and may and could, because that kind of ties me back to the second point, that absent a hard stop, I can't support it. And if it had provisions where the recycling activities and composting, which I think encompassed the entire scope of it, that it ended at the earlier of some development activity within some proximity of it, or...
That's what I'm saying.
10 years, for example. If it's earlier, then fine, and then the applicant's obviously willing to move should development activity be quicker, but the public and everyone else would also know that there is a date certain, and that is a benefit to the region that doesn't exist today. So as presented, I don't support it, but with changes, again, the reason that the applicant isn't willing to have a hard date, and that's well within his prerogative, I understand it, but the trade-off is that the status quo in my mind remains. As to the motion, that's why I opposed.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Just, I guess, maybe a comment. In kind of reading through the tea leaves amongst the council, it seems like there's some support, we're passing a version of the DA that's before us. Do we do a better service to the citizens and the applicant to, as Councilmember Burton pointed out, continue it for a couple of weeks to allow legal staff to clean up the language so that both the public and the applicant have something that is maybe a little more clearly defined? Well, I shared earlier my desire to have this be development-driven, and Councilmember Burton brings up a very strong point, is there's a finish line, and I think Councilmember Mylum really tried to drive home to that, and perhaps if that discussion would have happened at 6:30, it may have come across a little more clear than it came across at 11:30 at night, and I appreciate that. I've been guilty of that more than once, so I am supportive of the philosophy behind the motion, but I do think that we do ourselves a great service by building ourselves a little bit of a better mousetrap when it comes to this. So I don't know if the maker of the motion or the second is willing to amend that or not, it's your motion, Mr. Palmer, but it's something that I definitely would support a continuance for a few weeks.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Before anything would, if something were to be amended, it's probably helpful to get some sense if other members of the councils, because the next thing, if there was some consensus to try and do something like that, we obviously need to hear the applicant. And if the direction is that is not feasible, then we don't need to have everyone come back and have another public hearing. Let's just hear that, and if that's the case, that eliminates the need to continue to try and craft language.
Yep.
Because, again, if there's not a hard, fast end to this, then I'm not supportive of it, from my perspective, so. It may be in the minority. Public hearing's closed, though.
We could vote on this motion first.
Mr. Clerk, will you call a roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton? Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavner?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
This is on Councilman Palmer's motion?
Correct. The I's have it.
Okay, the I's have it. Okay, item 10 is future meeting topics. Anything under this item? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I know the hour is late, but I just want to say again, welcome back, you were missed last week. We are, whole council, city staff, sorry for your loss, and it's nice to have you back.
Anyway, to entertain a motion to close, to adjourn, and to close. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.